Maybe I'll wait a couple minutes and there's some coming in the door, so we'll wait a couple more minutes. Share the news with those that aren't here, but we had a couple of board members that were not here in time for the group photo. So at break time, we're going to run back down and try one more group photo. The photographer will be there, so get your practice smile on one more time. Hey, I'm gonna go ahead and get started here, otherwise we're going to be behind on schedule. So this is the May seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's now called to order. Secretary Burford, please proceed with the roll call and announcements. Trustees, please respond when the secretary says your name. If we have folks that come in after we've started, you can adjust accordingly. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anna Cavanado.
Present.
Christine Cronin. Bill Johnson.
Present.
Tamara Mavitz walking in the door.
Present.
Cheryl Martin.
Present.
George Mendoza.
Present.
Laura Moore.
Present.
Cedric Reel.
Present.
Deidre Schreiber.
Present.
Brad Stevens.
Present.
Carrie Thompson.
Present.
Mauricio Valerio.
Present.
And I see Chris Cronin has arrived. So Chair Martin, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll now have some brief announcements from Board Secretary. Chris, please proceed.
Thank you. I'll begin with the usual housekeeping announcements. We ask everyone to please put your cell phones on do not disturb. Members of the media, I should do that myself. Members of the media, if you haven't already done so, please sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk to my left. Likewise, anyone present in person who wishes to give public comment, please be sure to sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk. To provide access to the public, the public have been invited to attend in person, and this meeting is being livestreamed over the internet. Speakers must use the tabletop microphones, which are the only way that people on livestream can hear what we say. Use of the mics is also necessary for proper amplification within the room. If more than four mics are on at a time, however, they stop working. Therefore, please turn your mic off when you aren't using it. If you brought a laptop or device, please be sure the speakers and microphone are turned off. Otherwise, they'll interfere with the mics causing feedback. If you're joining us remotely, please keep yourself muted unless speaking. Trustees, in front of you, you will find the meeting agenda and travel reimbursement forms. Please sign the travel form and return it to Pepper by the end of today's meeting. And the board received no written public comments for this meeting. We also did not receive requests to give oral public comment by remote means. That concludes my housekeeping announcements. I'll also give a brief update about the status of the board's membership. Trustee Carrie Thompson joins us for the first time today. The State Senate confirmed his appointment on April twentieth. Trustee Thompson is the Center Director for EOU's Hermiston Pendleton Center and is also the university's Veteran Coordinator, Veterans Coordinator. Carrie is himself a twenty-one-year veteran of the Armed Forces and is a longtime EOU employee. Trustee Thompson steps into the staff trustee position that was vacated when trustee Danny Bailey left employment at the university. Welcome, Carrie. We look forward to your contributions.
Thank you.
Three trustee appointments were confirmed by the Senate Rules Committee on May tenth. However, the Senate as a whole has been unable to form a quorum since then. So those appointments have not yet been approved by a Senate floor vote. We must await this final step before the appointments of our next three trustees will be completed. The future trustees awaiting this final step are Gary George, Charles Hoffman, and Aaron Laird. At this point, we don't know when their appointments will be completed. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Chris. I also, before getting further, want to acknowledge our new President Select, Dr. Kelly Ryan. Welcome, Kelly. So we will now have co-presidents' remarks. George, Tamara, and Christine, I think you three were out. We're going to during our break time rundown real quick and get a group photo since two of you guys were not able to be here in time, so. Okay, co-presidents.
All right. Thank you, Chair Martin. I'll keep my remarks brief. I hope you had a chance to read the the report because there was a lot happening here. But I'll just point out a few things. We had May the fourth be with you true day at the legislature and students from EOU as well as the other three regional universities were there. It's a really fun day to be part of. Presidents of all four regional universities were there. And so you could feel the passion of the students, and I think they enjoyed learning a little bit, I say a little bit, about how the legislature works because, once again, there was no quorums, so all they could do is announcements and then call it a day. But that also enabled them to meet with more legislators and have some good discussions with them. Cedric, you were there, and it was a it was a good event and another example of how well the four regional universities are working together this year. Then last weekend, we had the CCC Track and Field Championship Meet here at EOU. And two of the universities that came had their commencement day that day. And so the students who came to run in the meet missed their commencement. So we had like a mini commencement for them. There was ten. And it was really enjoyable because I got to talk to all the parents of the and relatives of the students that came to graduate, and they got to tell a little bit about each student as they came up to get their diploma, and it was just a really enjoyable experience and another reminder of, you know, what we're all here for, which is the students. The Eastern Oregon Career Expo was also a big success this year and with lots of attendance and lots of students walking through. You had a booth, Cedric, Cedric's in everything. I went over there for a half hour and two and a half hours later, I still hadn't seen everything. And then the last thing I would just want to mention out of the report, there's many more things worth mentioning, but is the the twenty twenty-three EOU Food Drive, which was organized and conducted by the students. And they raised over twelve thousand four hundred dollars. And they are sharing some of the food with the community food pantry. So I just want to congratulate the students on their efforts for that drive and that's a good example of the kind of students we have here at EOU. Hey, Laura.
Thank you, Richard. Good afternoon, trustees. I would echo, if you haven't counted, the report that we sent is seven and a half pages. So when we say there's a lot going on, if there's a lot going on. It's an exciting time at EOU and it's been nonstop since our last board meeting. I honestly can't believe it's the last board meeting of the academic year. I feel like yesterday was November. I don't know if I'm alone in that, but it has flown by. It's been a wildly busy and wildly productive year at EOU. Transition phases are never easy and not often enjoyable. But what I can report is that over the last nine months, the campus has not stood still. The campus has engaged in difficult conversations and discussions, and the campus has made progress on so many fronts, and I'm proud of us for that. Just a few areas I want to highlight out of the report and one that didn't make the report because it's hot off the presses, but first, this is the last ever board meeting in this room. Yes. Yeah. So this building is set to be renovated. The first floor was renovated years ago. The second floor has not been. And the the bulk of the work is around seismic retrofitting and renovations. For those of you that don't know, that's very disruptive. Almost every wall on the second floor and every square inch of actual floor will be disrupted, removed. So what the project allows is an opportunity to reconfigure spaces when we put it all back together. A big portion of the work is going to be on the building envelope, and if you have walked around this building and looked closely, we have water intrusion, we have a new roof that we desperately need a new roof. So lots of work there and also in the basement. We have classrooms down there if you've ever paid attention, and so all of that work will take place over the next year. So this entire building will be, everyone in this building will be relocated. I want to thank John Garlets and the facilities team. This is an arduous effort, and they have planned and sought feedback and replanned and sought more feedback and replanned again. We're very close to sort of a final layout of where everyone is going to go. Everyone is going to have a little bit of sacrifice in this move, but if we can clear the building for one year, we can accomplish this, bring everyone back. So we're all going to share the burden for a year and will be a little bit scattered on campus. But all of those locations will be announced, and then when you come back, you will have a new board room. So that's exciting. Um, another note that I wanted to, or another item I wanted to make sure to note is the ongoing work with University Council and their subcommittee around the Great Colleges to Work for Survey. As you are aware, that is one of the goals in the Ascent Twenty-nine, and so this year I charged University Council with analyzing the results of last year's survey, and they put together a subcommittee to do that. We then met with the subcommittee about that. We've had some some great conversations. These are difficult topics and sometimes hard to hear certain certain items that come out of the survey. But we are, we are opening it up and we are talking about it. The next step is the subcommittee will meet with Cabinet, I believe, next week. And our goal is to isolate two, the top two priorities we think that need work in the coming months and years. And that's been great work with University Council. I appreciate this. The report is linked in the University Council materials in your agenda items. The report was a significant amount of work, and I appreciate their willingness to do that and then engage in those conversations. So I think we'll get to a place, the goal again is to define top two areas that we really want to focus in on over the next few months to try to improve. And that we can kick off next fall when University Council is back, we can kick off that work with them. So good, good things there. Okay, and then the item that is not in your report because it just happened, actually, right before lunch. So I printed this to make sure I don't mess anything up. EOU claims the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three CCC, so that's the Cascade Collegiate Conference, All-Sport Champion title. So I will just read, "The award goes to the school that finishes with the highest point total. Points are awarded on a formula based on the number of schools sponsoring the sport and competing for a regular season championship. Final standings are based on the top eight place finishes per institution. Eastern finished with the highest total thanks to several standout performances from individual programs. EOU had three CCC championship titles in volleyball, women's basketball, and men's track and field in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year. This year's title marks the first time EOU has been named the CCC All-Sport Champion since the two thousand seven, eight athletic year. And is only the second time in our history. So that just, that just came out today. Congratulations to Angie and the job she does as the Athletic Director, as well as she's a pretty darn good coach as well. And all of our coaches and student athletes who really have developed and lead a wonderful program. So that that was good news for today. And the last thing I would highlight, if you haven't noticed the poster boards and everyone kind of rushed over from lunch, I hope during a break, you'll take some time to review the poster boards out in the hall. Those, there's two different sets, and they come from two different initiatives, events. One was last week's teacher appreciation event, so we got faculty together and did an appreciation event. Lacey and her team work with students to seek feedback, and there's a lot of wonderful comments from our students about faculty on those poster boards. The other set of poster boards is from an initiative that started a couple of years ago, and and we brought it back this spring term called Looking for the Good. And it's just that. It's looking for the good across campus and and finding ways to recognize those who do great work because there are many. So what's on the poster boards are the actual submissions from across campus. You can nominate whomever you like. I, please take time, they will make you smile, and it's just another testament to the wonderful folks that we have working at EOU. So I hope you have time to enjoy those out in the hall. And with that, I will conclude.
Thank you, Chair or Co-President. Moore and Shabs. Too many things on my mind. Okay, so and I'm going to kind of follow a little bit with what Richard and Laura both said about sports because the men's track and field were three-peat Cascade Collegiate Conference Champions. They were seventy-five points ahead of the second place. Head Coach Ben Welch was the Conference Coach of the Year, and Alexander Castle, am I saying that right? Castle was the the Field Athlete of the Year. And then they also won the Sportsmanship Award. But of personal interest, Christian Mendoza placed fifth in the fifteen hundred meters. That was pretty cool. Justin Ash, which is a graduate of North Powder, so that means something to me. He's a great kid. He placed second in the three thousand meter steeplechase, was an NAIA standard. Justin also was first in the five thousand meters, and Christian came in second in the five thousand meter. And the pole vault placed tenth in pole vault was Max and Husk- Puxel. So we had a lot of personal attachment to this track team, so good job, everybody. And that's pretty much all I have to say at this point in time. Do any trustees have any comments? Yes.
Yes, Brad. So I think we're all excited to have our new president here, President Ryan. What I want to talk about is our co-presidents. It's how wonderful we've had a year here to have these co-presidents get us through this year and to lead us and actually exceed our, what we wanted to. So you really saved us and all your work. And that report that I tried to read through, I mean, it's unbelievable, all the stuff you've done, but I just think we as a board need to thank you.
Very much agree with that, Brad. Any other comments from trustees? Okay, hearing none. We have no public comments at this time.
That's correct. No one has signed the sign in sheet.
We come now to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are voted on as a block without discussion. If any trustee wishes to discuss a consent agenda item, please say so, and it will be removed from the consent agenda and added to our regular agenda at some point prior to the end of the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items, or is there one that someone would like to discuss to be removed later? Anna Cavanado.
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anna Cavanado moved to approve the consent agenda. Trustee Mendoza seconded. All those in favor? Hi.
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 All those opposed? We now move to our first presentation, which is by Ben Cannon, our Executive Director of the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. Director Cannon will update us on the current work of HECC in the legislature and elsewhere. Following his report, I will invite trustee comments and discussions. Ben, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Can you hear me? Excellent. Okay, very good. Well, thanks for the invitation to participate again in your board meeting. Really appreciate that growing partnership that we've had at the HECC with Eastern Oregon University, and I think these board meetings are a great opportunity for us to connect and share in the development of the common set of principles, values, and an agenda for Oregon higher education, and I'll get to some of our work on that, recent work on that in a moment. Let me join the trustees and expressing appreciation for the work of your co-presidents during this interim year. I've had regular and fruitful meetings with, in particular, Co-President Shabs, but also Co-President Moore, and know that they've done well by EOU and done well by the state, and I'm grateful also for their partnership and their leadership. Also, of course, joining the trustees and being excited to welcome incoming President Ryan on board. I've not had the chance to meet her yet, but look forward to doing so and trust that you've made a terrific hire, and she will help you lead the institution towards an ever better, brighter future. So really looking forward to getting to know her and congratulations on on that important hire. The the agenda for today, or at least the the sort of materials for today, suggests that I do a couple of things, including give you kind of an update on the HECC's areas of focus as we enter the the final weeks of the legislative session. I just came from the Capitol and spend during this time of the year, you know, a fair amount of my my time working with and around the legislature to help them complete their budgets and policies for post-secondary education and workforce training. Also, time permitting, spend a couple of minutes with an update on academic, some academic policy issues that the HECC has increasingly been involved in specifically related to transfer. And then I hope that that leaves ample time for conversation with you, so look forward to your questions and comments. In terms of the legislative session, our priorities, as proposed by the Hackett and adopted by the governor, reflected in her governor's recommended budget and her, the policy bills that she advanced, remain the same. But there's obviously some updates, given that we are where we are in the process. We remain really focused on trying to ensure that the legislature sustains its commitment in the Oregon Tribal Student Grant, this one-time first-in-the-nation program that it adopted last year for, but only for a year, that ensures that tribal students pay very little, if any, towards the cost of attendance at Oregon's public institutions. We are cautiously optimistic that the legislature will, will make an ongoing commitment to that program and and not sort of leave us and really you, in a sense, sort of holding the bag in terms of the expense, the costs associated with with those students. So we're really, we're really, fingers crossed, really appreciative of the support that we've gotten at the legislature and that tribes, in particular, have worked so hard to secure amongst legislators for making that program permanent and funding it on an ongoing basis. Beyond that, again, we're focused especially on student affordability and state financial aid with our proposal for increasing, and the governor's proposal for for large increases to the Oregon Opportunity Grant, the Need-Based Aid Program that we administer that supports low-income students, low, and increasingly, we hope, middle-income students and defraying their cost of attendance at colleges and universities and you know, I think it's harder to expect much of an increase at this point to that program, given the way the budget seems to be playing out, but we playing out, but we remain hopeful that we will be able to award more and the Legislature will appropriate more to us for that program for the upcoming biennium than it has for the last couple of years. But those increases are, if they occur, likely to be very modest. We remain sort of steadfast in our expression of our, the need for Oregon's public universities and community colleges to receive investments from the Oregon Legislature that allow you to sustain your programs and continue to provide access, not burden students with large tuition increases. So that means robust investments in the Public University Support Fund, as well as the Community College Support Fund. We spent, you know, weeks with the Legislative Ways and Means Subcommittee, along with our college and university partners, helping make the case for state investment in our institutions and our students. You know, it is, this is the largest, the Public University Support Fund is the largest single item in the HECC budget. And even small proportional increases in that budget are big numbers to the Legislature, can appear that way. So we, I wish I felt more confident that we get towards the kinds of funding levels that I know you and the other universities need in order to really make investments in students, but I'm hopeful that we will at least reach, you know, levels that would allow you and other institutions not to have to make major cuts to programs. And I know that varies by institution and to institution, and you have your own strategies and priorities and issues of enrollment and tuition that you are managing, but I hope that the state is able to continue to do its part to ensure that cost increases are not borne primarily by students, but that are seen as the responsibility in large part of the state. As part of that or related to that proposal for increased investment in the Public University Support Fund, we've, as you likely know, the Governor proposed a $15 million sort of special fund for the technical and regional universities, including EOU. We've worked with the Governor's staff and with the true institutions to develop a sense of what that, you know, would be for. It would be one-time dollars in the Governor's mind, so not meant to sustain ongoing operations. It would, in the Governor's view, or it should be used in order to make investments that can help the university have a sustainable budget, have our technical and regional universities. So one-time investments that will pay an ongoing, create an ongoing benefit, either through how they deal with, you know, systems replacements or other sort of sort of systems upgrades that are one-time expenses and could be long-lasting, how they deal with enrollment, again, in ways that could have an ongoing benefit, et cetera. So we've appreciated working with your co-presidents and the other technical regional universities on that. I don't have a good sense of whether or not that has traction at the Capitol. And, you know, expect that Tim and your team, you know, will be probably in a better position than I to sort of update you on where they think that stands. So I think those are, you know, some of our key priorities as as an agency. They're really budget-related, not probably surprising, surprisingly. Policy-wise, there are a lot of bills, as I'm sure you know, even bills having to do with higher education. My guess is that not many of them will pass. I think this is a session where the Legislature, particularly when it comes to starting new programs that would cost money, will be very frugal and is not likely to generate a lot of new work for or new sort of areas of activity for colleges, universities, or the HECC, or new requirements for our respective institutions. So we continue to watch and happy to talk, you know, share what I know about any particular proposal. But at this point, my expectation is that they become laws, you know, on the whole, pretty modest. I do think that the Governance Bill, I think that's how it's been described, and Chris or Tim will, again, probably have more of the sort of up-to-the-minute details on this, but it is about university governance. That is sort of its primary focus. I wouldn't describe it as a sort of a seismic change in how university boards of trustees operate or how universities are governed. But I think that that bill is, could advance and maybe more likely than not that it will. From the HECC standpoint, we don't, we don't take a position on those questions of university governance, given your kind of parallel structure and reporting structure into the Governor. But we do, we are very interested in the provision of that bill that would require the HECC to annually convene trustees for training, for relationship building, for the development, shared sense of agenda for post-secondary education in Oregon. I think there's also an opportunity through that kind of convening to deepen the sort of partnership and collaboration at the leadership level between our public institutions. So we are watching that closely because under the, under the current bill or its amendments, that would be that the HECC is the coordinating commission that would convene that event, work with you and your teams to develop agenda for that. And so we're waiting or watching closely on that. So those are, those are some of the issues, topics that are most on my mind. I'm going to stop there, see if there are questions, comments, and then happy to talk also about a couple of other more specific issues that aren't necessarily as tightly related to the legislative session.
Thank you, Director Cannon. Do I have comments or additions to Director Cannon's comments at this time? Looks like you covered it pretty well. Do you have additional things then?
Yeah.
Director Cannon?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Martin. And, you know, I would be remiss, I meant to mention in my opening that I really enjoyed the visit that I took to La Grande to EOU a couple of months ago now, along with Melissa Goff, the Governor's Education Policy Advisor. So it had been a while since I had set foot on the EOU campus. It was really great to be back there. I look forward to, again, getting out hopefully early in the tenure of President Ryan to connect with her and connect with other leaders and students at EOU and potentially some of you as well. So maybe that's in connection with an upcoming board meeting, but I, again, want to express my appreciation for the the great afternoon that the co-presidents organized for Melissa and myself. And I know for her in particular, as a relative newcomer to Oregon higher education, she is the Governor's Higher, Governor's Education Policy Advisor, whose portfolio includes higher education. She and I work very closely together, but she's relatively new to Oregon higher ed, and I think it was a really terrific opportunity for her to get to know the institution, some of what you're doing so well, including through your teacher preparation program, which is of particular interest to her and to the Governor and to the state as a whole, as I'm sure you know, given the really sort of leading work that EOU and some of your faculty are doing within that department. The other topic or topics that I thought I'd touch on relate at first to transfer. And as you are likely aware, the HECC has a greater responsibility today to coordinate pathways for students between community colleges and universities than it did a few years ago, as a result of legislation passed in over the last several legislative sessions. We're at the point of where the Commission will likely next month, at its meeting on June 8th, adopt administrative rules that establish how major transfer maps are developed and established and applied to Oregon colleges and universities. And just in very brief terms, a major transfer map is part of that set of courses that a community college student will need to complete in order to be effectively juniors upon transfer for a particular major. So once they've identified, at any Oregon public university, so that the concept is, once they've identified the major, they are likely to pursue at the backglowier at level. The community college student, by completing a major transfer map at the community college, will be prepared to be prepared for that upper-division work within the major at any Oregon public university. I think for most state legislators, state policymakers, this feels pretty common sense and straightforward, like a type of guarantee that we should be making community college students in practice. It's actually very complicated, because the same major at EOU and Western or OSU may actually have a very different set of expectations or a somewhat different set of expectations for what the student should have done in the freshman, their freshman and sophomore year at the community college in order to be prepared to enter that major. So sort of ironing these out and coming up with standard major transfer maps is complicated. It has raised questions about sort of who's actually responsible for making final determinations. The rules that our staff will propose to the Commission on, at our upcoming meeting, will emerge out of a Transfer Council that is comprised of equal numbers of community college representatives and university representatives that we convene and support, that have been working for over a year to sort of work through these kinds of questions and present or discuss and debate proposals for how to establish major transfer maps. We've had a subcommittee of that Transfer Council, working in particular on this upcoming rulemaking. I don't know whether that Transfer Council in its upcoming meeting, I think this week, will reach consensus on that. I think community colleges have, tend to have a different perspective or somewhat different perspective than many of our university representatives. But at the end of the day, the Commission is required to take, take action to establish how these transfer maps will be put in place and how they will be applied and how sort of, how differences of opinion between institutions will be worked out. And so that will be coming forward to the Commission. I, you know, I'm, overall, I'm very pleased with the work that we've done on transfer. We released earlier this year, we announced that the Transfer Council had presented the HECC with 10, the first 10 commonly numbered courses amongst all community colleges and universities. These, again, lower-division, common courses that now have common numbers or will, starting in the fall. That, that list will grow. The Commission adopted those initial 10 or 12. We will, we are growing that over time. And so there's, the Transfer Council, I think, is working pretty well. There's a lot of momentum there, a lot of folks deeply involved, including from EOU. And I'm generally optimistic about the path forward on that, to make this transfer process more seamless for Oregon students. That being said, it all takes a lot longer than folks would, you know, I think a lot of folks on the outside would expect. And that seems to be the nature of these kinds of issues of, that involve, you know, things that are really core to the academic mission of public universities and community colleges and the faculty responsibility for academic standards, et cetera. And I guess the final area that I'll touch on, and then, and then I'll really be done with my report, is just to reinforce the the appreciation that we have at the HECC, and I know that Governor Kotek does as well, for the way that EOU has led in the work for equity and via the moonshot. There's a lot to admire about what you are undertaking under that umbrella. I'll just highlight the the importance of, and I think the modeling of effective partnership and collaboration, the fact that this approach that, that you have adopted is inclusive of Blue Mountain Community College and Treasure Valley Community College, I think is really, really significant. As we at the HECC look at a higher education landscape in Oregon, as many places in the country, where enrollment is not likely to increase very much, if at all, and in fact, is more likely overall to decline, as we see that in the demography. I think greater and greater levels of partnership amongst Oregon institutions to better serve students, and in particular, to better serve underrepresented students is absolutely vital. So if the, if the HECC in its next sort of iteration of strategic planning and, you know, which, which may be on the horizon for our Commission, if we can, if I can help it sort of lead towards a sort of a single new principle or set of values, it will probably be something in the realm of collaboration amongst institutions for the success of underrepresented, you know, the success of underrepresented students, equity at scale. And I think that's, that's the challenge that we face in higher education. I think that's, that is, you know, nothing short than of a crisis, really, for higher education, to deliver equitable results at scale. And I think you are, through the moonshot, helping model one way of getting at that. So I get real appreciation there. So let me stop, Chair Martin, and of course, happy to spend as long with you as you would like, but recognize you've got a number of other things on your agenda as well. So I'm happy to let you get on your way, too.
Thank you, Director Cannon. We very much appreciate you spending time sharing with us the things from your perspective and from your side of the state. We very much appreciate that. Do we have any comments or questions for Director Cannon from the board? Looks, looks like you did a good job of presenting. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, George.
Hi, Ben. It's George Mendoza. Hey, thankful that you got to the 10 classes, 10 courses. Look forward to hearing that. Are there any, like, round two, phase two after the 10 classes, or are you, are we sticking to those 10 and living with those for a little bit to just see how things go?
Yeah, thanks for the question. No, we're definitely in phase two, and I don't have the list in front of me of what that second phase, it's about another 10 or 12 that we're working on. And when I say we, I really mean faculty are working on. We convene them, but they are in the room together from those disciplines, faculty who typically teach the courses, and they are working on establishing what the common number, name, and effectively to get at that sort of learning outcomes. Just to be really clear, because I know this is a public meeting, that doesn't mean that they're identical courses. We really do respect, and this process really respects, faculty autonomy, the curriculum that faculty are responsible for. It doesn't mean that students are going to read the same books in the same commonly numbered classes. It does mean that they have a common set of recognizable sort of learning outcomes, that they're driving towards the same objectives, and they'll have the same course title, and they'll be applied towards degrees in the same way. So that's the level at which we are really pushing this work, and the HECC role is primarily in the convening and then ultimately the adoption of it. But no, we're moved, we've moved from that first batch onto the second, and the law has us continuing to do that year after year until the, I, I'll get this wrong, but it's something like, I think we have a plan for something like 100 of the most common, commonly taken courses to ultimately share the same title, course, course, course title, course number, and course credits.
Thank you. Yeah, that seems like a big undertaking, the pathways to those and keeping the individuality of the universities and yet meeting the needs of the community colleges so that it makes a smooth transition for those students. A great undertaking, but one fraught with challenges, I would think.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Director Cannon, and we'll look forward to visiting with you again.
Yeah, hopefully next time in person. Take care.
You're always welcome back on campus, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let's see. We are going to move on now to our ASCENT 2029 revisions. Co-President Laura Moore and University Counsel Jeff Carman have been working tirelessly on this, and they have come up with some great information for us. They're going to propose some revisions to some of the KPIs for ASCENT 2029 strategic plan. President Moore, please proceed.
Do you want to go to that table, or you want to stay here?
I'll stay here, and I think Jeff will join right there.
Okay.
If he'll pull up a document.
Great.
Thank you, Chair Martin. If, if you remember, in November, we talked to you about the need to potentially adjust some of the KPIs that were originally outlined in our strategic plan. And there'd been a lot of conversation on campus about what the, some of the KPIs specifically around recruitment and retention, what those meant in a post-pandemic world. Also, if you'll notice in the report that was in your materials, we, we did look historically at how have we been doing, where are we trying to reach? And we heard clearly from enrollment managers on campus that the, some of the KPIs as defined were beyond a stretch goal, and it was actually kind of a demoralizing task every year to not come anywhere near what, what's outlined in the strategic plan. So I think reflecting on how the world has changed and how students have changed and and what that's going to look like is, is still not totally known. And then really listening to the people doing the enrollment work on campus in terms of what are reasonable levels and should we be thinking about revisions. So University Counsel formed another subcommittee. University Counsel has been busy this year. Jeff is leading that charge, and I appreciate the work that they've done. They formed another subcommittee and looked talked very closely with enrollment managers across campus over a number of months and and came back with some suggested revisions and those are included in the report in your materials. So with that, also, those were shared with Cabinet Plus. We had a discussion at the Cabinet Plus level. And and there was alignment there. So the leadership is aligned and the enrollment managers are aligned. It is one of those topics that did not go through a committee first because it is we knew that everyone would be interested and we signaled in November that we'd be bringing this back to you. So this is a recommendation from University Council as well as the administration and I appreciate your work, Jeff, and your team's work on primarily getting the right people involved in the discussion. Sometimes goals are set and people inherit goals rather than be involved in setting them. So I appreciate your work and I'll let you add your comments.
Good afternoon, Trustees Jeff Carmen, Chair of University Council this year. In your report, you'll see a table on page one that has all of the measurements of the KPI strategic plan from 2015 up till current. This data was shared with our various stakeholders around campus. And this is how we kind of came up with our recommendations to give to you today. So they're all based upon the past data that was recorded just to try to reach something that was fairly fairly achievable by the various stakeholders around campus. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Yes, I have one question and maybe some comments based on that answer. Mr. Carmen, can you tell me a little more about how we chose the number? A couple of those numbers are nice round numbers. Was there some process in which, say, the colleges had a chance to identify their future growth trends, what they're willing to commit or support? And that fed into this number? Are we still lacking that sort of work?
That work was not involved as part of this review, just based on time constraints. This was more or less based upon what was achievable in terms of what each stakeholder had in the works for enrollment and retention.
What each stakeholder had?
We had admissions, we had advisors, just anyone who's affiliated with these particular KPIs, just to get their feedback.
Okay, thank you. I'm a big fan of key performance indicators. KPIs are important. KPIs are not minimums to maintain employment. They're not numbers we use to determine bonuses. They're not always even a good measure of how we're doing, but they do allow us to either set aspirational goals or very actionable goals or maybe even just shared measures of what we think is reasonable and what we do here. I certainly worked hard with President Inco when he first initiated this effort, trying to identify KPIs across the institute. And I talked to President Moore a year ago about the necessity for she and President Chav's to think hard about this window they had to address this issue, where we need to look honestly at some things that needed a good, hard look. But I'm concerned about what we have here right now. I think I have a couple of concerns. First off, it seems to me that we haven't involved everybody that needs to be part of this conversation. I would think that our deans would be pretty directly involved in thinking through their programs, their plans for those programs and how that would affect our FTE moving forward. As I look back over our last three years, we've instituted a broad range of new programs here to EO. Let me remind you, we've instituted master's degree in accounting and counseling, healthcare administration, public administration and in social work and undergraduate degrees and public relations, data analytics, marketing, ag entrepreneurship and special education. That's a breathful. Our total projected FTE with the performance that this board used to approve those programs pro formas that I repeatedly criticized as being relatively hopeful. That that FT number is 779 FTE for the new programs we're producing. Right? I wonder if we've really thought about the impact of those programs, whether they're going to work or not and how that affects these round numbers. Second, I'm really concerned about making changes to our our KPIs related to retention and completion rates for our cohorts. I think all the board members are very concerned about these numbers. I think everybody on this campus is concerned about this number. I think parents across all of our student body and the students themselves are concerned about these numbers. And I don't understand why lowering our goals is going to help us do the things we really want to be doing. And it's easy to say, let's be more realistic. But I'm reminded of the issue we had in Ontario 10 years ago, at Ontario High School in 2013, we had a 53% cohort graduation rate. Okay, and we and the community recognized the problem with that. Five of us got together, business leaders, to start an initiative we called Poverty to Prosperity. The Oregon Department of Education saw the problem as well and they identified that high school is one of the 10 worst performing high schools in the state. And as a result, they changed the way they were teaching teachers to teach. The ESD created new professional development programs, the state invested millions of dollars for new programs. And we changed that high school's outcomes. Last year, we saw 93% graduation rate for the cohort in 2022, 53 to 93. And so when I look at our numbers here, I know we're all disappointed when we look at four year completion rates at 29%. I'm still very convinced there's a broad range of things we could do if we wanted to. And the way we'll want to is if we have a higher aspiration. I'm glad we're having the conversation. This is an important conversation, but I think President Moore just said you don't want to inherit goals. You want to set the goals. And I'm looking over here, at least one member of this group that's going to come in and inherit some of these goals. And I can't help but think maybe we need to continue this conversation. Chair Martin, I make a motion that we postpone this action item until the November 2023 regular board meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Your points are well taken. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we table this until the November board meeting. And well, let's let's just do I do is there a discussion on that postponement of this? Is there discussion from the board members? Trustee Mabbett.
Yeah, and thank you, Trustee Johnson, for your insight, always very thorough. Would you have some recommendations that you would like to have presented to the board in November so we could make more informed decisions? I know he didn't pay me to ask that.
Trustee Johnson won't be a board member in November. Good luck.
Great question, Trustee Mabbett. I was going to say the same thing when I said, is there discussion? Mendels, Trustee Mendoza, sorry.
That's no problem. Bill's got all of us going here, I think. I said the same thing. I said, so what's your recommendation? He just finished his giggle. But I would say I do recommend if if what you're getting at, Bill kind of pointed out highlights that he thought were deficiencies. So it might have been involvement of our deans or involvement of our provost or involvement of others. So there's definitely should be more seats at the table, more feedback given those that are responsible for some of these KPIs. Sorry, Jeff, I don't know the whole process. I'm sure you you always do a wonderful job, but I I I suspect there needs to be more people involved in this and more ownership taken by some of the the executive level folks on what we do and how it gets presented as well. Not sure of all the process, but I I would say there's probably some smart people in the room that can that can tell us what other steps that that they would like to see so that we arrive to a high standard, but also a relevant, applied way of of getting results to increase over time.
The means to getting there. And yes, Trustee Cavanaugh.
I was going to ask Jeff if you could just very briefly elaborate on the process in itself so that we can better understand what was involved with the, you know, the numbers that are presented here and perhaps, you know, some a little bit of brainstorming about how can we make the 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 strategic plan that belongs to the campus so that the campus community has more input into it.
So the process just basically detailed. So we've been having some conversations the past academic year regarding recruitment and retention. I reached out directly to that group that was directly involved and we discussed the various KPIs that were listed there. Again, it didn't involve everybody, as as was pointed out, but I felt it was a pretty good conversation in terms of what we've done, what we think we could achieve and where we could grow. Again, it wasn't necessarily meant to lower expectations by any means. It was just to achieve something that we feel like that was achievable. So.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. President Moore, do you have any other things that you would like to contribute to this discussion?
I would just say that deans and provosts both were involved in in terms of our conversations at Cabinet and Cabinet Plus. They did have the opportunity to review these materials. I think we continue to struggle as an institution and even we heard from our what partner Wiley at our last board meeting that even they are struggling to meet their enrollment goals. And so I think there's a lot of reflection right now on all of the programs that Trustee Johnson referenced that we have added. And we to date are not seeing the students associated with those programs and pro forma. So I'm I'm fully supportive of additional work. I would say this is work that should be done regularly and often in terms of refining the right KPIs. And there are a lot of unknowns currently in terms of of how our partnership will bounce back, of how students will start to respond a couple of years after COVID. So.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Trustee Mendels.
It really was going to be similar to what Vice President or President Moore had shared. I was thinking saying classes, courses, programs, enrollment, how it's how they're tied, how's that, how's that going? Sounds like we, you know, we have added numerous programs and courses and degrees and enrollment might not be at that 789 number that you shared. It's just good for us to hear that in perspective as well. We're applying resources, we're applying strategy and are those resources and strategies playing out? That would be good information for November.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, it's kind of a complicated thing because there's so many variables involved in it. For instance, it's a little hard to tell on a program that's two years old as opposed to a program that's 10 years old and and taking all of the different aspects of that. So I it is a complicated process, but one that we definitely need to undertake. And I I applaud Jeff and Laura both for working on this and 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 I do agree that we need to to include more work on it. Trustee Cronin.
Well, I'm I'm relatively new to the board and so wasn't part of any of the initial conversation with KPIs. So you know, I'm I'm interested in in learning more. I I guess my my question for the group is and and for Jeff and for the other administrators and people who have worked on it is is there is there, do you anticipate a an issue if we do delay until November, setting a a different set of KPIs? Is that going to be a problem or is that business as usual? I'd just like to hear some more information about that decision.
I don't think it creates a problem. I think if you talk to the enrollment managers, they were looking forward to having to starting to chart their path towards refined numbers. Between now and November, it would not have a significant impact of any kind, however.
Trustee Reel.
Yeah, I just wanted to put forward. That's, well, Christine bringing that up is a good point and something I was thinking when we're talking about this. As Trustee Johnson's mentioning, KPIs can mean different things depending on how an organization is actually trying to utilize them, what the actual goal is there as they pertain to S in 2029. I'm sure that it's probably going to be a point of discussion, but I would put forth that maybe this being the agenda item during our retreat and to really aggressively have conversations among the board, especially with the influx of new members. Making sure everyone's on the same page on what we're trying to achieve with our KPIs as they pertain to S in 2029. And I'm sure if there's deeper discussion on SN 2029 and how that pertains to the board, what we're trying to actually do there. I would just like to have a better conversation on some of that because I think that would clear some of the confusion, at least as far as what work we're trying to put forth to council to be trying to complete with the KPIs.
Thank you, Trustee Reel. And and it's it it's it's of no use if we have just numbers that don't necessarily correlate to anything substantial. So yes, Trustee Cavanaugh.
I guess my question is, so is this like a something that we have to approve all the points at the same time? Or could we look at some now and some later? The reason why I'm making this comment is because I think that the enrollment numbers, you know, in in introducing enrollment numbers that are more realistic are appropriate, I think, for the campus community. I think that having, you know, the 5,000 is truly unrealistic. So I really have no problem personally readjusting those numbers. I think where I have a little bit of a problem is with the retention numbers or the success rates because as Trustee Johnson said, there is no real reason to lower the bar. What, why, what is there? You know, why would we want to lower that bar? So I can see how we would address the enrollment numbers realistically, but how we would then you know, continue to try to achieve the best that we can in terms of retentions and graduations. So I guess my that that was my question is like, this is not a package that comes all together. So we could look at these, some of these KPIs separately.
Thank you, Cavanaugh, and I'll I'll come back to that and as soon as Tamara has her.
Yeah, thank you. I would just add that to the comments, Trustee Reel made some really good suggestions. And one benefit of postponing it is we do have a new president who among other things, had some really fantastic ideas about student recruitment and retention. So I would welcome her involvement in that as well.
Well, let's let's take a vote first on Trustee Johnson's motion to postpone it. And then we'll vote on whether to do it as a retreat agenda item or whether to just bring it up at the November meeting. So yes.
That's fine.
Excuse me.
I I have a practical question. I'm sorry, just insert regarding the addressing it at the retreat. If the goal is to include the faculty, the the colleges, the deans more thoroughly in the conversation, will there be time to do that between June 5th prior, we don't, they're not going to be here that much longer before they're on, they're gone for the summer.
That's a good point. President Moore, do you have anything to that ties into what Chris just said about involving them? Is there a is is there a step we can do at the retreat that we can get started on it and then maybe have a format or something and then involve other stakeholders at the November meeting? I I don't know. I mean, I'm just looking.
Yes, I I think if you wanted to make this part of your discussion and Dr. Ryan can be part of it then and maybe shoot for a November for action, but the retreat would allow for, I think, more conversation.
I I totally agree. So let's, how many of you are, do I hear a motion to bring it up at the agenda in the retreat agenda items?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'm sorry, point of order. Can I call the question?
Yes. Question on the first motion. All those in favor, say aye. Sorry. Hi. Okay, motion pass on postponing this item. Now the motion is on, do we have sort of a structural part of this at our retreat? Motion was made by. Are there anybody opposed to postponing? Thank you. Okay. Motion was made to work on it at the retreat. I heard a motion by Mendoza and a second by Mabbett. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. So we will start a framework of it on in our retreat. And then maybe we'll have an action item in the November meeting. Thank you, Trustee. Thank you, trustee Johnson, for bringing that forward. Thank you, Jeff, for for all of the work on this. I know that you put a lot of work into it and we will look forward to working with you further.
Right, thank you, trustees.
Thank you, Laura, as well. Our next item is to review a proposal for the university's tuition, mandatory fees, and room and board rates for our next academic year. This proposal has been the product of a lengthy process of review for review and discussion within the university community. Leanne Case, Associate Vice President for Finance, will present the proposal for the board's consideration. Leanne, please proceed.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Martin. We'll be ready in just a second. As mentioned, you have seen this proposal a couple of times, or the Finance Committee has seen this proposal a couple of times. It's been a long, a long process this year. And in your board materials, I will make a note in your board materials, there's a reference to House Bill forty-one forty-one. It's the wrong House Bill. I've just recently, I've recently just added the correct attachment in there, but in your materials, it is the wrong one. Not sure what happened there. I'm going to spend a little time today, not only walk you through the proposal, but also just talking to you about the process that we go through here at the university to set tuition. It's a, it's a long process. It's a collaborative process between the administration, our students, the budget and planning, tuition advisory committee. And we get out and talk to a lot of people and try to make it very transparent as we work through it. And that's really the reference to House Bill forty-fourty, forty-one, forty-one. We've always done that at Eastern. It's just more formal, in a more formalized way now that we follow all of those areas. At the end of the presentation, you can either, you can decide if you want to just lump them all into one, but we'll be looking for motions on the tuition proposal, the mandatory enrollment fees proposal, and the room and board proposal at the end of this. We this year has been a challenge with, it's always a challenge at the beginning of the biennium. We don't really ever know what our state funding is going to look like, so we kind of have to just make some assumptions on what it's going to be for our students so that we can get the tuition set in a timely manner before they really start registering for fall term. This year, Laura, Tim, Richard, really everyone, a lot of continued efforts with the legislature to fund additional state support. All the state support, this increased state support reduces our dependency on tuition, which obviously supports our students and our affordability here. We've continued to invest in programs for our Eastern students, the list that the trustee Johnson shared earlier on the number of programs that we have stood up here at the university as we try to revitalize the enrollment, the academics, all of those things have been, while we've also seen declining enrollment and lived through a pandemic. During the last two years, we've also continued to seek alternative revenue streams. A lot of these revenue streams are going to improve our retention, their their retention efforts as we go forward, their enrollment efforts, they're all focused on very similar things. There's a lot of interconnectivity between those revenue streams. We've used those revenue streams to help offset our costs here at the university. It doesn't come without challenges to the human resources behind those that are still doing the work. So we have a lot of work going on by the same number of people or less as we have lived on vacancy savings as well. But it has helped with the challenges we've had on the expenditure side, so that that has been a positive. Tuition increases, I say this a couple of times during the presentation, they've always been a last resort in the budget process. We don't look to our students to balance our budget, and we look at all of the other ways that we possibly can before we settle on what a tuition increase will be for our students going forward. The Budget and Planning Tuition Advisory Committee charge. Ultimately, they're to advise the president on recommendations to you regarding resident on-campus tuition and mandatory enrollment fees. They also advise on room and board. They advise on all of our fees and all of the, all of the tuition, not just on campus. The committee is made up of members, faculty members from all of the colleges, as well as administrative professionals, students, and our classified staff. They do a lot of work. This year was 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 just a pleasure to work with all of them. They were very thoughtful and mindful as they worked through the process. They started their work in October and finished it in May. They'll have another meeting at the end June to really finalize the year and look into next year. They changed the chart, they changed their membership this last year to be a three-year membership on the committee that really helps when on the administrative side. Because it's a lot of effort to learn about the expenses at Eastern, the revenue streams at Eastern, the enrollment streams, there's just so much historical data that goes into the committee. That's really going to just be an amazing piece of it to have so many returning next year. Helen Moore, many of you know Helen from when she was a board of trust, when she was on the Board of Trustees. She was our chair of the Budget and Planning and Tuition Advisory Committee this year. A lot of credit goes to her just in and bringing that forward. Continuing to really make the efforts of that committee be sustainable and be meaningful as they made their decisions. Their other responsibility. We have opportunity, we provide opportunities for student government and students to participate in the process. We do that through the committee, but we also do that in additions, additional student forums, meeting with students offline. I'm talking with students, having our our student president available to us all the time. So there's really, for me, it's it's active engagement all the time. We want our students to know what tuition's going to look like and what the charges are going to be for them. Ultimately, it it comes to a written report to the president, includes recommendations, deliberations, and observations. Those are in your packets as well as President Moore's response to the recommendation. The committee settled this year and reaffirmed their guiding principles to maintain the best value position relative to other Oregon public universities. Build and maintain financial stability to allow consistent improvement and continue to serve the regional access by ensuring affordability to those in need. I believe that this proposal meets all three of those guiding principles. Just a short list of pros and cons of tuition increases. The list could be huge, but those are a few that I have chosen. The pros, it slows the pressures on the expenditure budget, reduces dependency on one-time funding that we have in those alternative revenue streams. It allows the university to continue to operate on current service levels without having to take severe budget reductions. It can negatively impact the student's educational experience if we take the tuition levels too high. It can work against our desire to remain the low-cost Oregon public university, and it can negatively impact the future of enrollment growth. Balancing the guiding principles against the need for revenue and a more balanced budget is always a challenge. This year was was a particular challenge. I think I've used the word challenge more this year than than ever. Well, we had the steps that were taken in preparing the committee for the tuition proposal. And going forward, we reviewed various tuition rates of the OPUs and where we are in relation to them. We can did a comparative analysis provided by Wiley for our off-campus tuition. We took into consideration the points made by student leadership. Considered state funding scenarios, looked at the HAC procedures for maintaining our undergraduate resident tuition and mandatory enrollment fees below five percent increase. Considered net tuition impacts and the impacts of financial aid on our students. Refine the expenditure budget and refine our enrollment, our enrollment projections. All of that took place over a ten-month period of time. The draft tuition proposal for twenty-three, twenty-four is a range between two percent and four point nine percent. And it's a, it's variable rates in lots of areas, and I'll try to remember to explain why we didn't just settle on a flat rate across all of the, all of the areas. Budget and Planning Tuition Advisory Committee. After their meetings, they were actively engaged in twenty, in the twenty-three, twenty-four tuition process. They agreed on the the principles and the drive, the data driving the increases. They reviewed all of data for student impacts as well as budgetary impacts associated with the increases, and they find and made a final recommendation on the, on the tuition rates. In full transparency, I include this slide so that you're aware of what our tuition rates have looked like since two thousand and sixteen. You can see the undergraduate resident rates have increased thirty percent since two thousand and sixteen, but the average is three point seven four. The increase since two thousand and sixteen is a large percentage, but if you look at the average, we have stayed below five percent in all areas except for our undergraduate non-resident online, which is a new rate for us, and the graduate resident on campus, which we folded all of those into one, so it's sort of that high percentage of seven point six nine is a bit misleading. The proposal for twenty-three, twenty-four is a four point nine percent increase for undergraduate on-campus residents. On-campus undergraduate non-residents, three point five percent. Off-campus undergraduate residents, three percent, as well as off-campus not undergraduate non-residents. Graduate tuition increase at a two percent rate. No increase to the undergraduate and graduate business differential and no increase for dual credit or high school and our high school rates. The projection on the tuition proposal would be an increase in our revenue of three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. This chart shows the percent increase as well as what that means in terms of dollars. What the rate would be as well as the annual increase for a student, for a full-time student over the course of the year. Comparing ourselves with the other Oregon public universities, and you can see that we are the lowest undergraduate resident tuition rate in this state. Lacking just slightly behind the Western Oregon University. The Oregon State rate and the U of O rate, they have gone to a cohort method. These are just, these rates only apply to students coming in this fall. Just in a chart form, this chart shows the undergraduate resident tuition and mandatory fees per term for all of the Oregon public universities. The the salmon orange color shows the rates that have changed from last year to this year. And at the bottom, I always include the where we are in relation to to the other universities. You can see we're three percent behind Western Oregon University. So that goes back to our first principle of maintaining that relation, that position where the in relation to the other public universities. You can see there, you know, we're we're a long ways behind the University of Oregon, and a lot of that is in fees as well as their undergraduate tuition rate. And we're, we're, we're coming in close with Portland State University as well. And what what isn't captured in any of this is the additional fees that are charged for tuition. We call them differential fees. At Eastern, we only have the the business graduate and undergraduate grades. At other institutions, they have differentials on a lot of programs, whether it's an honors program or a business program, engineering program, they have other fees that are tied to those that are considered tuition as well. Why sometimes this works and sometimes it doesn't. Looking ahead at our graduate tuition, we're five hundred, we're proposing five hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents on all programs, all residencies. So at this current time, we've not put into place any differences in our tuition for all of those master's programs. Next year, you can expect to see a graduate tuition proposal that has differential rates, not differential, as I just spoke about, but different, different graduate tuition rates for different programs as we move forward with those. Our off-campus, sometimes called e-campus in other areas, again, just showing the differences between all of the programs. We're at two eighty-six, forty for our residents and two thirty-nine, sixty for our non-residents. Oregon State, it's at three fifty, no cohorts, no residency. I would point out that Southern has always got, has also gone to a resident and non-resident off-campus rate. The comparison that we had Wiley put together for us, they looked at five hundred and eighty-seven national programs. Average cost of those national programs, three hundred and three per credit hour, the median at two eighty-seven. You can see we're right in the the range there. They also looked at forty-four Western programs and three hundred and twenty regional programs. We have Wiley do this for us because they just have a broader region and more resources to be able to reach out and really create an apples-to-apples comparison in the the off-campus tuition realm. By looking at the impact of how this looks to our budget, I'm the far left hand, the far left-hand column is what we would look like if we had no tuition increases and no enrollment increases. Even after using two million dollars in temporary savings, we would still have a three point six million dollar budget deficit use of fund balance at the end of the year. The next column looks at where we would be if we just increased all rates at four point nine percent. The third column is our suggested tuition, but is flat enrollment. And the final column is the suggested tuition plus enrollment increases. So you can see using the final the final column, we will be using two point two million dollars of our fund balance, and you'll see more details of that in the budget presentation. Do you, should want to do them all at once, or do you want to do them individually?
Let's start off with any conversation about the tuition rates. I'd really like to hear from everyone because this is critical in so many ways. So I'd like to hear a lot of discussion at this point. And then we can decide at that point, Leanne, whether we want to vote them all as a package or individually.
If I could, Chair Martin, just briefly, I just wanted to recognize the Budget and Planning and Tuition Advisory Committee who engaged wonderfully this year on a difficult topic. They talked about this at length. They brought proposals to the table. They debated those proposals. So I just really appreciate the involvement of that committee as well as Leanne's leadership with that committee. We we are often, I think we forget how blessed we are to work where we do, and we have very civil and professional conversations with each other around difficult topics, and tuition is one of those. So I'm just pleased that the work that the Budget and Planning and Tuition Advisory Committee did and appreciated their recommendations here.
Thanks. Yes, so on the Finance Committee, we've worked very hard at this and really appreciate the input from Leanne and and taking their recommendations. We are really struggling with the fact that we're we're reducing our fund balance. And we just know we can't raise tuition more to 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 fund that. We have to find other ways of doing that. But I think they've worked very hard at doing it, and you'll notice we haven't raised graduate rates as much, but that's more of a competitive reason that we haven't done that than than others. So I just think that they've already done a good job with it, and I fully support it, and the Finance Committee did recommend that we accept this.
Thank you, trustee Stevens. Trustee Mabbett, did you?
Oh, thank you for the opportunity. Is it possible to do something like a sensitivity analysis on campus with existing and prospective students to see? You know, is it elastic, inelastic? How much of an increase could they tolerate?
Yes, and I would expect, we've been without an institutional research director this year. I would expect that in the fall, we will have that available from RZA. Yeah, we've looked at that in the past. I can't remember how many years ago, four or five years ago, we did do an analysis when Wilson Zare did his work. So, so, yeah, we we certainly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, trustee Johnson?
Certainly, I'd like to commend Vice President Case and the Budget, Plan, and Tuition Committee for their work. We consistently have good quality work coming out of this process, so thank you for that. From my perspective, I always look at inflation and how it affects our numbers. For me, the important measure is the CPI number for urban consumers in the West. In the past year, that was a four point nine percent increase. We're proposing a four point nine eight percent increase. Therefore, this is no change essentially for the various consumers in our region. So while in the past I would have thought of five percent as being a pretty large increase, I'd argue, no, this is very reasonable, given the broader world that we sit in today.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. I totally agree. It's always, are there other comments? I think it's always a challenge too. It's kind of a double-edged sword on our resident students. I think it's always a challenge, too. It's kind of a double-edged sword on our resident students having a larger increase than the non-resident. In a way, it's almost counterintuitive. We want to to get more, a higher enrollment of on-campus, and yet we charge a little more of an increase for them. And I I understand the reasons, but maybe that is a hard concept for for people to understand or to get, and they may just say, well, heck, it's cheap. I I have less of an increase if I stay at home and study, you know, off-residence. So could you address that a little bit, please?
Yeah, I agree. It is counterintuitive, since we do receive state funds for our Oregon residents, but the population of students is so much bigger. And they get. I don't know that they get more, but they get they get the campus out of it. So when we're talking about Oregon students coming here, they're getting to experience Eastern Oregon. They're getting to experience the the small-town college campus. So is it, is it fair now on the finance side? Does it generate a little more revenue? Yeah.
Trustee Valerio?
I, I was at lunch with one of the students of our OTP program. And she went on and on and on to say how incredible value it was to be on campus and how great it was. And she was talking to the other two students there and said, and by the way, if you don't believe it, go out there and try to get a rental. So anyway, I I I think that numbers are reasonable. It's always a pain to trying to keep on projecting a four-point-nine increase every year. And 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 that is the challenge that we have, right? So the 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 balance between higher enrollment may or may not happen. If it doesn't, we do so. But anyway, I love the process. Thank you for the numbers. As as today is 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 a good place to be, and again, the inflation is building on these numbers. And this is one of the big things that we can hardly control locally.
I think we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on these individually, because maybe, i- is that, does that work for you? If we, you know, maybe we're okay with this one and not so okay with the next one, so.
I think that that works fine for me. And I would just say, thank you for mentioning lunch. That's one of the things I didn't really hit on today is our fee remission program. So when, in theory, when our tuition goes up, so does our fee remission. So we're giving money back to our students at the same rate, not, obviously, not dollar-for-dollar. And those, the students that you met with today, they actually pay a discounted rate from the program that they're in, in the high school that was set up. So it's very valuable to us, but we have all of those other factors at work and that somewhat counterbalance our tuition increases during the year.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the the suggestion, suggested tuition rates, please? I, oh, go ahead, Jesse.
I move to approve the suggested tuition rate increase for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
One second.
Thank you, Trustee Stevens. So Trustee Cronin has made the motion to approve the suggested twenty-three, twenty-four tuition rates. Trustee Stevens seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Leanne. If we're we're ready to go on to the student help fee, please.
I'm, I'm gonna move on. Our mandatory enrollment fees consist of our building fee, our HOPE special building fee, kind of weird. Student help and our incidental fees. This year, the only increases suggested are the student help fee and the incidental fee. The Finance and Administration Committee saw this proposal a couple of times this spring. The student help fee, the mission of the student help fee. Counseling Center is to facilitate physical and mental health and the well-being of EOU students and providing quality, affordable healthcare, prevention, wellness, education, and affirming, respectful, compassionate, inclusive environment. We have a small campus, and we have a small campus, small on-campus population. The on-campus students are who pay these fees, in addition to our athletes and any student living in the residence hall. Small, doesn't generate a lot of money, still has the expenditures that go along with it, and they provide outstanding services. So we have a contract with Oregon Health Sciences University for our physical health, and we have two mental health counselors available to our students at all times. The medical, medical services, again, are provided by Oregon Health Sciences. Dr. Carpello has just recently negotiated her last, where is she? Her last contract with Oregon Health Sciences University. I appreciate that, that she got that done before before her exit. Very helpful. She has a good relationship with Oregon Health Sciences University. There will be some reductions in service, probably looking at a three-and-a-half-day availability for physical health going into next year versus a four-and-a-half-day going into next year. We also have mental health counselors. There's access to athletic trainers. And then the behavioral assessment team also is operated out of the student health services area. They've faced some challenges over the last few years. Again, the declining enrollment, especially on campus, has impacted their ability to generate fees. And we've had increases in costs and personnel. We've seen increases at Oregon Health Sciences University through the contract, the previous contract. Some of that related to the pandemic. Some of it just related to the medical industry. And then we, they've also been able to maintain quality services and access for the student. So, and we talked about balance with the tuition side of things. This this fee faces the same exact thing as does, you'll see in a minute, the incidental fee that the students have to manage. The proposal on the table is to raise the fee from two hundred and fourteen dollars to two hundred and thirty dollars per term. It's a seven-and-a-half percent increase, or sixteen dollars. And then this just shows, again, it's it's from the the previous chart where we looked at mandatory fees and tuition, where Eastern is in relation to the other, the other universities. And we do look a little bit higher than some of our peers. Some of that is because the the peers charge for services, so they charge for individual things when there's an appointment at the at the clinic. We don't charge for very much at all. In addition, most students receive their services for free. So again, it's not, it's truly not an apples-to-apples comparison unless you're just considering the fee. The student incidental fee is made up of students. The students manage this this student fee. They do all the work, they do all the work on their fee committee that I do with the Budget and Planning and Tac Committee. So many of those students overlap, so they get to do it twice a year. So they do it not only ten to twelve meetings with me, they have their own ten to twelve meetings throughout the year. So I appreciate their engagement on the Budget and Planning Tac, but also what they do on their own committee. The Finance Committee heard from Vice President of Finance Affairs, Drew Lusko, at the last meeting. Great job of presenting and sharing out. Their voting members include the ASEOU president, three senators, and four students that are chosen at large. For those of you that don't know much about the student incidental fee, it's, these fees are part of the educational mission. They provide education and training that's not available inside the classroom. They fund units for extracurricular activities. The fees are controlled solely by the students. So they budget, they plan, they spend, they take back, they make budget cuts, they do all of that work. Their activity budgets, they closely scrutinize to give quality programs to the university community. True education comes from exposure, from a full spectrum of ideas. They have open forums to hear ideas and speech, and they help support students and groups and their ideas. So it, again, it's a lot, it's a lot of work when they're trying to go to school, they're trying to compete in sports, they're doing things in the arts. And yet they're still managing to come forward and and manage a one-point-two-million-dollar budget at the end of the year. They've also faced some challenges. They receive requests in each spring, each winter term from all the clubs that are underneath their control. This year, they received one-point-four-million dollars in requests. They also want to maintain quality services and access. They're required to maintain a specific reserve percentage. And they were up against the same things that we were as far as inflation and cost escalation. This shows their budgets, student fee allocation from twenty-two, twenty-three to all of the units that they they serve, and then what it looks like in twenty-three, twenty-four. To say they had a challenge is minor. They, they had to take the opportunity to reduce or cut many budgets under their purview. They did it in a thoughtful and mindful manner. They made hard decisions. They made decisions that were not popular. But they came out with a budget that is balanced and affordable and thoughtful. They did have to raise their fee for their students. But I just can't say enough about about the the effort that goes into it from our students when they're working through this. They have a limit on the amount that they can pull from their reserves, so they did have to look at a twenty-dollar increase in their fee. So they are looking at a three-hundred-and-fifty-four-dollar per term and per term rate for next year, which represents almost a six percent increase. Looking at where we sit in relation to the other public universities, then it's not always apples-to-apples. The University of Oregon shows a hundred-and-forty-one-dollar incidental fee. They have chosen to split off their student union building allocation into a separate fee. So it lowers this fee, but they still have the same amount in total, if you look back at that other chart. If we were to do that, it would lower our fee down to about three hundred and fifty-eight, or two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and ninety-five dollars of it would go to the student union. So just to kind of keep that in mind, we, we don't have the population of students that are paying this fee that other schools do. So growing our on-campus enrollment is key not only to academics and vitality of the university, but it's also our student health fee, what our student incidental fee does for the campus as well. This chart shows from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty-four with the proposal, what all of the fees have looked like. You'll see between the years of two thousand and fifteen up to two thousand and eighteen. Somewhere in there, fees were, fees were relatively flat. I think that Trustee Real would say that was probably not the best thing to do, because it caused, it caused some higher increases in the outer years. It it seems like a good idea to keep fees flat if you can. But you can see the larger increases as as we got further down the road. And and part of that is 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 cost escalation, but it's also the decline in on-campus enrollment and the number of students paying the fee. So just, just so you have this and and are able to see what it looks like. The proposal is to increase the incidental fee up to three hundred and fifty-four dollars, the student help fee up to two hundred and thirty, building fee, and the HOPE building fee would remain at eighty-five and twenty-eight dollars for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Is there discussion on the mandatory enrollment fees? It was interesting when I was at the conference in San Diego, one of the universities said that they had no additional fees. They charged no additional fees other than, I think it was a dorm fee. But and I'm wondering where they made it up, where the difference came, but it was an interesting concept. Yes, Trustee Calonado.
I have a question. So that the fee pertains only to students that are enrolled full-time? Or do those that, say, they come here half-time on campus, do they still pay exactly the same fee?
They do. It's a good point. Thank you. And these these rates apply to a single credit hour on campus. So if you take one credit, you're going to pay all of those fees for for on-campus. We put that, the students put that into place two thousand and fifteen. It's been quite a while that incidental fee has been like that. We changed the student health fee of that two years ago and the building fee of that two years ago. Again, it's just our diminishing population of students paying the fee. We had to do something to generate more, more revenue. It also, I don't, it also applies to all athletes regardless of modality, so all of our athletes pay it, as well as our students living in the residence hall.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Yes, Trustee Johnson?
I have a question. That may not be answerable at the moment, but the EOU Foundation works hard to provide scholarships for students at EOU and also to provide university support grants that are designed to help professional development research and creative endeavors. Does the foundation offer support for some of these student-focused programs that the student incidental fee helps pay for?
Trustee, President Shafz, do you have any?
Not directly.
I wonder if we should have a conversation about the opportunity for alumni of some of these specific programs to better engage with some of those activities. That's all.
That's great. President Moore, did you have a comment? That's a good idea. Might be something.
We do have some, we do have some donors that specify that money will go directly to, like, the outdoor program and stuff, but not directly.
Yes, Trustee Mabbett?
Just a question, you know what, you know what I'm gonna ask about. So the special legislative allocation for District Fifty-seven students, did you work that into your formulas at all? The the million dollars set aside for students who live in Oregon House of Representative District Fifty-seven, how did you work that into this at all?
Thank you. We just received the IGA today, so I've sent it on to Mr. Burford for review, so we are on our way to that. It will play in to the financial aid package side of things for those students. So we have a criteria available. And if you aren't aware, we have a million dollars from the Port of Moro to spend on students from House District Fifty-seven. So we have until June of twenty-four to spend that out. So a nice, a nice piece of money for those students. We're looking at around. It's possibly going to be, again, just based on the the number of students coming to Eastern from that specific district. Probably around five to seventy-five-hundred dollars will go to those students, so it it it's a nice scholarship, so I appreciate that.
Any other comments? Would somebody please present a mo- a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four mandatory fee, enroll, enrollment fees?
I'll make a motion for a second.
Thank you, George Mendoza, made the motion to approve the enrollment free fees, and Trustee Real seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Let's move on to the third item.
And finally, the room and board rates for twenty-three, twenty-four. These have also been presented to the Finance Committee a couple of times. Guiding principles for a residence life, creating a genuine community for helping students find their story. Create a comfortable and clean, safe, inclusive living environments, create value and price options that make sense for EOU, and support the EOU academic mission. The twenty-three, twenty-four assumptions, they'll operate fiscally responsibly. We require that. Provide affordable and safe housing options for our students, invest in rebuilding staff, invest in capital repair and renewal. Budgets, two-hundred-and-ninety-three market beds. This is a slight decline from last year on the budget side of things. We're hoping that by the time we bring back a final budget for you in the fall, that will have rebounded and that those numbers are much higher going into the fall. Retain ninety-five percent of students from fall to winter and increase efficiencies to maintain affordable price points. A lot of you have heard from Jeremy David Jones over the years and stuff, does a tremendous job keeping our students in the halls, keeping them happy while they're here and keeping them safe during the, during their time here. Drivers on the board side, on the meal side, expected increases from a Sedexo contract. We have a third-party contract with Sedexo. Many of you had lunch there today. They do a wonderful job feeding our students and keeping them healthy and providing them with options that they enjoy. They have, but they have increases in personnel and food costs. Um, they have, but they have increases in personnel and food costs, just like everyone else says. Uh, the numbers on the board plans um are a little bit lower. Again, it's all about quantity. Um, and they're looking, increasing now is that gradual approach rather than um taking a slower approach now and then having to have a double-digit of increase um in board prices down the road. Meal plans, I'm go up a hundred, they have different meal plans. You can see they have five different meal plans that students can choose from. So it ranges from a hundred-and-ten dollars increase to a hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase during the year. Um, it's, it's what some would consider reasonable um at that three percent mark. The room rate drivers are the facility investments, um, staff investments, equipment replacement. Um, and then the, again, just the long-term gradual increase rather than slowing things down and then taking a, a larger increase later. Um, facility investments will be substantial this year. And as we talk about the budget, they're looking to um invest about between one-point-four and one-point-six million dollars in the facilities coming up. There, there are issues that have, um, we've been holding on to while we waited to see if a new facility was needed versus just renovating. Um, we're finally pulling the trigger and and making some changes. And Alaka upcoming, this coming year, actually will start um the fif- around the fifteenth of June and be done by the time they get back in school. So um, it's one of those things that nobody will probably ever notice, but it's a large investment. Um, so, looking at the room, the room increase, um, the way that Jeremy does this, it's, it there's a single price for the um, the double units and then he builds off of that. So then, then just maintains the differential between all of those prices. So it comes out to a hundred-and-ninety-dollar increase across all of, all of the board plans. Again, it just represents the commitment to keeping the prices competitive while maintaining high levels of services. Um, it's a conservative approach to the increase um and the budget with a strategic use of the savings. Um, and that's the use of the savings is really that investment in the capital and the buildings coming forward. Looking at the comparators, uh, these are who Jeremy feels like are, are really our best comparators. Based on the facilities we have, um, against their facilities and the, and the type of students that we really have. So you can see, we're kind of in that, you know, right in the ballpark of where we are. This is a comparison of um double-room rate with a medium meal plan. More information will be available um in the budget presentation, but this is um just kind of a comprehensive look at what the budget looks like for housing, um, residence life based on two thousand and fiscal year twenty-three versus twenty-four. Uh, you can see that the, the room and board revenue is actually declining. That's that three percent decline. Um, other revenue is increasing. That's our camps coming back online and just really generating more revenue on the camp stream. And things are relatively flat. Compensation um goes up a little bit. Jeremy should be fully staffed next year. He was not this year. Um, service and supply is increasing um as everything are. The meals are going up um with the Sedexo increase. Uh, and their services, our prices go up, and so do, so do theirs. Um, increase in, a small increase in student aid. So Jeremy does offer scholarships for housing, um, students that can't afford that. And then the large increase in the capital improvements from last year to this year. Um, this being primarily the one project in Alaka. End of the year, the projected cash balance after the bond payment would be about two-point-three million dollars in cash for housing and residence life.
Are there discussion points? Trustee Stevens. Trustee Cronin.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I would just say that Jeremy did a great presentation for us. Um, and I, I'm just very impressed with the, the program that he runs and has worked very hard to um stabilize enrollment in the dorms. And, and I think he's done, doing a really good job there.
Thank you. I agree. Trustee Stevens.
Yeah, I'll just add, he, he does a really good job. I don't know if you noticed at the bottom, the two-point-something million cash balance, it seems quite a bit. But we have really uh major challenges in uh upkeep and uh renovating the, uh, the facility. So it's really important that he's doing that.
Thank you, trustee Stevens. Any other comments?
Just uh.
Trustee Mendoza.
Just to add to, if I recall, the one million dollars in um, in expenditures for capital projects was like windows and roof um replacement. Is that, that's what I recall hearing. So I, just in case we needed to, to know or remember uh what they were gonna, what he was going to improve or what was gonna be improved.
Thank you. Do you know if there's any uh big capital improvements that they're anticipating for this next year? In addition to what we're seeing?
For beyond twenty-four? Um, yeah, they have about, um, I'm guessing here, John's here, um, ten to fourteen million dollars in back projects. Um, it could be anything from a roof to the siding to all of those things that they've, they've really just sat on for probably the last four or five years. Um, one was till they um had occupancy at a level and their financials in a position that made sense to continue moving forward on those projects. And two, we had talked um for several years about with the enrollment growth projections, at some point, we would need a new residence hall. Um, so then we were trying to balance, he was trying to really balance that off of new residence hall or, or do these improvements, and then what does that look like? So I think John's presented him with at least another one-point-five million dollars that needs to be done relatively soon.
The residence halls have um a full building assessment that we conducted a few years back and a really a ten-year look at the projects that will likely need to occur over that ten-year window. So it's um, it's, it's very planned. Now, things can change, something can break, but overall, we have a good ten-year look at what they will need in the next ten years.
Great, great. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four room and board rates?
So moved.
Trustee Cavanado.
Second.
Okay. All right, trustee Mendoza moved and trustee Cavanado seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you so much, Leanne. Um, we will move on to the FY twenty-four operating budget, please.
I really like it when Gibb comes to help me. How do I do? Thanks. Well. Thanks. All right. Um, again, this is um, this is not a cold presentation for many of you. Um, on the finance committee, you've seen um the budget overview for a couple of times, um, both in April and in May. Um, I'm gonna share with you just the, the budget overview, state funding outlook, which looks a little better today. Um, current expenditures and assumptions and changes, how we can close the gap. Um, preliminary budget for ENG and then our non-ENG um budgets as well. I will be back in the fall um with a final budget for you. Um, we started doing that a couple of years ago, especially in the first year of the Biennium. I'm not knowing what state funding was. We were either gonna come back with a revised budget at your first meeting or present a preliminary and then come with a final. So um, this makes me feel better. Um, again, um, I know I talked a lot about this um with the tuition. I'm trying to shift the, shift the focus a little bit on our budget and planning tuition advisory committee um to more of the, the budget side of things. So they not only do their work on the tuition side, um, they're also doing their work on the budget and helping us determine what new initiatives we should look at. They're looking at new initiatives once they're funded and how, how did those funding streams, um, what do their outcomes look like? They report to university council, they help with that transparency with um shared governments going forward. Um, they just, they just do an outstanding job. They see the, the quarterly reports, the budget management. They came up with uh scenarios of things that they thought we could, we could do better in, you know? Did, did we need to travel as much? Were there um contracts that we should look at, getting rid of? Were, were software contracts necessary? Um, they looked at a whole scheme of things this year. Um, just, just throwing things on the table to, to get us to think about them. So I expect that that work is gonna continue into the next year, um, just with our budget challenges that we have. They began their work at their first meeting of the year, which was in October. Um, they, we set the stage for them, we give them all the history. Um, get them up to speed on where expenditures are, where the most expenditures are. At Eastern, the biggest expenditure we have is people. Uh, but they also look at the, the service and supplies, travel, capital investments, all of that. Um, when departments submitted their budget requests for this year, um, they looked at six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars in new requests, um, nineteen new non-personnel-related initiatives. Um, this is significant for the way that the campus responded to the budget process this year. Rather than requesting departments take a five, ten, fifteen percent budget reduction, um, we asked departments just to be very thoughtful about what their needs were. Did they, did they, if they needed something um to move forward, they should absolutely request that. If they didn't, uh, this wasn't the year to go forward with newer initiatives. We already are facing budget challenges in this current, yeah, current fiscal year and moving forward. And we have the same issue. Um, departments responded very well. This number is typically around two million dollars um and fifty-some requests that the committee reviews. So kudos to the departments for, for taking that really out of our hands and really being mindful at the department level, um, while still being able to negotiate what they needed um to move forward at their, at their departments. Um, departments attended the meetings um to provide clarification and answers to the questions related to the requests. Um, this is the second year of doing that, so it gets those departments in front of the committee and allows that engagement and that transparency um between both parties. Then budget and planning tuition advisory committee made a recommendation to the presidents um on the new initiatives and the presidents responded. Um, any initiatives that weren't funded will be considered after we know what our state funding level looks like. And then again, when we know what our enrollment levels look like. So for those departments that weren't funded anything at this stage, there will be more opportunities during the year um for them to get their initiatives back on the table and have that conversation going forward. We've said this um for several years. We've made significant investments in new programs, all those new academic programs um that were talked about, the masters and accounting masters and then counseling. Um, the public administration, um, all of those things um have taken investments as we've moved forward. And we've continued to do that and continue to invest in people, um, technology, student engagement, so that we have a vibrant campus. Their investments have to pay off, um, they have to pay off in a form of enrollment. So we need those students here to take advantage of those programs um and to contribute to the vibrancy of the campus. Um, we've had some challenges in the state funding model. Um, so we're still working on that to make sure that we have enough money coming in from the state, so we don't have to rely on tuition. And at the end of the day, we still have a regular cost escalation, um, four to six percent annually. We've been managing that internally um with the help of the departments um through the budget process. Um, but also just trying to keep things, being very, being very mindful of what we spend our money on and if it's necessary and if it moves the needle on enrollment and where we are as an institution. This is the revenue estimate for next year. Um, it does not at this stage include tuition or tuition increases. Um, you'll see that as we move forward. Um, we, I built in state allocations of twenty-five million dollars. Um, this is based on the DAS CSL um nine-hundred-and-seventy-two million dollars. Um, it also includes other things like SOP and our engineering technology, sustainability funds, um, tuition at the base level, which is what we receive this current year in tuition dollars. Um, other revenue that comes in, in the form of course fees, um indirect cost recoveries. Um, our partnership with Oregon State University is included in there and then our fee remissions as well. So this three-point-one million, three-point-two million dollars is fear mission scholarships that go back to our students. End of the day, um, forty-nine-point-five million dollars in revenue um before we add in the tuition or any enrollment increases. This is just the state funding outlook, um, the POSF only. Um, so it doesn't include some of the, the other things that I talked about earlier. Um, goes from the GRB, co-chairs, um, DAS CSL, um, the Oregon Public Universities Request of a little over one billion dollars. Um, we had some news with the economic forecasting. Economic forecasting today came out uh more positive than was anticipated. Um, Tim Seidel has a little bit more information about how the LAC um plans to respond to the economic forecast. Um, I, right now, it is looking like it's, it's potentially in this DAS CSL. Uh, two weeks ago, we were looking at co-chairs or below. So things are moving uh quite, quite rapidly in the, the right direction. So that, that's all good news, um, especially for the budget, since I built the budget on the DAS CSL. Um, uh, Tim will catch up with us in a few minutes. Um, some of the known, known expenditure changes um that are included in the budget, a million dollars in labor increases, um, which includes um salary increases as well as OPE increases. We have the in-low hall match on the capital side. Um, inflationary and compliance increases of three-hundred-and-seventy-five, those are contracts we can't get out of, things that just go up automatically. Enrollment-driven increases. It also includes two million dollars in temporary vacancy savings, includes a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars in permanent savings. That again, came from the departments coming forward to say somewhere in, in all of the budgets that we have around the campus, there's a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars that we don't need. Um, sixty-thousand dollars was, has been put into the budget for a new initiative. So that's out of the six-hundred-and-ninety, um, bringing the remaining down to six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. Um, the big change that you saw in two thousand and twenty-three versus twenty-four, we had the grant funds, the alternative revenue streams of about one-point-two-million dollars above our normal vacancy savings of two million that we were able to bring into the budget to reduce um that down, to reduce our use of fund balance down. So those are some of the, the major changes on the expenditure side. For yours.
Uh, good afternoon, board uh members, Chair Martin. Um, so in terms of the budget revenue forecast that just came out this morning, um, the state of Oregon economists are projecting a one-point-nine-six-billion-dollar increase in available funding. Um, that's substantial. This will also trigger a five-point-five-billion-dollar kicker rebate back to the citizens of Oregon since we'll be so far over um the allocated uh budget. That, that revenue, that revenue forecast would provide us a kicker that's over three-billion dollars more than we've ever done in the past. So it's substantial. Um, the forecast does not include projections for a recession. Um, that's largely due to perception that the uh, the work of the Fed is slowing down um the rate of inflation and that projecting out into the future, they just didn't see that there would be one potentially in this right now, in this um, uh, near forecast. Um, what that means, of course, is a lot of available resources for the universities. We're getting good word, um, uh, confidence, more confidence. Of course, we certainly have more confidence if there's more money in the budget. Um, that we'll be seeking our one-point-zero-five-billion-dollar ask. Um, hopefully, we'll get more than that. We were really hanging on for a long time just to hope that we would get our state CSL, our current service-level funding. Um, it looks like we'll get that and potentially some additional resources. This is all shaking out literally right now. Um, I told co-presidents, Maureen Shav, this morning, it said, hey, great news. I'm gonna be in a meeting in a few minutes to talk about this. And yeah, we are continuing to work that all out. Um, what we're doing uh is, and we could talk more, this will be, we can talk about this more tomorrow when I do my legislative update as well, because there'll be probably some additional information out there. But we're already advocating for um not only the funds for the Oregon Opportunity Grant and the tribal student um grants and the um Public University Support Fund. Uh, uh, but we'll be sending, we'll be signing on to some letters to convey that information to um House and Senate and Presiding Officers' Leadership. And also to um really kind of turn up the heat to see if we can achieve some of those resources that we need. This also would include the funds that um This also would include the funds that um uh Executive Director Cannon mentioned earlier that were in the governor's recommended budget of the 15 million. Um, we're actually partnering with Portland State on that um as well, so it's really a truce PSU. Um, this is something that we started and having discussions on uh quite a while ago with President Shav's around, how could we all partner together? We're kind of five, five regional universities, they're an urban university, but they have a lot of similarities in their students um to Eastern. It's really, really striking, but we, we already worked together quite a bit. Um, and if we could achieve some of that funding, that'd be really helpful for all of us. So that's um the, the latest budget forecast um that now we will be working on to fulfill the budget for the next um, the next biennium, of course, everyone is asking for a piece of that money, the, it's probably been, even though there may be $2 billion additional to spend, there's probably been $8 billion of asks um that are out there. I know that um the uh trustee Mendoza could talk about the needs for K through 12 funding, which is also at a shortfall. Um, we could talk about it for Veterans Affairs, um, and we could talk it about it for just about every other aspect in the state, but we feel we have a good shot at making a case for continued economic growth through investments in higher education.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, first of all, trustee Stevens, do you have anything from the Finance Committee? Any discussions that took place in your committee meeting that you wanted to share?
Yes, we, we spent quite a bit of time on that, we didn't have any of this good news, uh whatever good news it may well be. The main concern is that because uh uh it looks like we're going to be a 2.2 million reduction in our fund balance, bringing it down to 16% below the 25% that we want. And the concern is that that also was, that budget was considering we're going to have a seven and a half percent increase in, in enrollment. And so the concern is uh we can't just get bought out by enrollment because it's, I think 1% enrollment raises $250,000, so if we're going to, without state, extra state support, uh, we're going to have to find some other way to balance the budget. And we knew definitely that balance the budget, we can't continue to run a fund balance. And so that means we're going to have to cut our costs somewhere, and I think that's something that co-presidents have talked about and uh we've talked about. And I look, I'm concerned that that's where we're going to have to look. Hopefully our, our, our enrollment will go up and uh our retention will go up. And uh, but I, I do think it's going to be hard for us to keep up, but maybe the state will come bail us out. I don't know.
Great, thank you. Yeah, this, this, maybe you can readjust those figures to the positive rather than, that would be a very good thing. I had one quick question, uh, and Tim or, or uh Richard, maybe you guys can answer that. The 15 million, if she approves that for the trues, is that, how's that going to be divided up? Is that going to be just equally divided among the trues, or are we going to do one of those negative formulas that don't benefit us?
Well, that's a good question and certainly been an item of discussion. The trues from the start, and this is the best, one of the best examples of how the presidents of the four regional universities have worked together this year. Uh, EOU has the least number of students of the four trues. And so if a distribution was suggested based on number of students, we would have gotten less. But from the start, all the presidents agreed, we all have the same kinds of problems. And so let's divide the funds equally among the four trues and then create a joint fund to look at uh some things like should we have two formulas in the distribution of the PUSF? And some, uh, should we, how can we share courses between universities and other things like that? And then there, at one point, there was a communication from HEC accompanied by an email from the governor's office suggesting that HEC should administer the funds on a grant basis based on what they thought the best ideas were. And again, the presidents stood together, sent a letter back to the governor's office nicely saying, no, we'd like to, we feel the best way to do this is to divide it equally. I don't know, there's been a final decision on that, but uh it, it is a time when universities could have chosen to compete again, and they chose to stay together with a single message. So that's where that's at.
Yeah, I can follow, I can add some follow-up that's of course happened within the last eight, 24 hours regarding um funding. We have not settled on the distribution, unfortunately, it's not something we get, we get to select how it is, but we are talking with legislative leadership on um how those funds we think could best be used. Obviously, some of the trues have some um initial needs, we do too, right now, if we could use some of that to offset some of the resources we're already spending. We've been working to make that clear that if we could use some of this for some operating costs or some offsets, that would really be nice. And that would, at, at particularly at a couple of the institutions, help save some positions um and help them uh move forward. Uh, and at, at the minimum, um, we'd like to at least have, uh, talk about how those funds could be allocated. Um, whether there's a, a set aside and we come back with a more elaborate plan. Um, and we work together with the other universities to present how that would work. There's a great amount of interest in what President Shav's mentioned about looking at the form, funding formula, which is something that is um, something we've been very keen on is looking at how the actual funding formula works or doesn't work for institutions, particularly like Eastern with the shifts in it, how we've been negatively impacted. But all of the universities are looking at that, particularly the trues and the bigs, uh, in Portland State, I should say, uh around um, how do we actually fund higher education in the state and what are the state's priorities? So um, those things need to come together as well, but um, we didn't have a lot of discussions really moving forward up until today, uh, because of the forecast, there was an expectation that would be down, um, potentially down considerably. And so it would be like, why have, why talk about this very much if we don't think there's going to be any resources available? Now that it looks like there are resources available, we're in high gear trying to put things together that um we can show uh run by our presidents and make sure they're okay with it, but bottom line is, we're hoping we can get some of those resources.
And I just add the 15 million is for the four trues and Portland State's partnership, and it would be additional dollars that would go to Portland State, so three and a half million or 3.75 million or whatever per.
That's good to know, I was thinking we had to divide it by five, but that was good.
Is this a one-time or is this?
It's a one-time, and when the governor put it in her budget, she specified it's for projects that contribute to long-term sustainability. So that's where a lot more discussions need to happen and it really does contribute to long-term sustainability if we can do this, which might be part of our operating costs. So that's what's all.
Yeah, our, our, one of the responses everybody has is you want long-term sustainability, how about a sustainable funding level? From the state, that would be really nice. Um, and that's where we've turned that conversation around to, let's discuss about how we actually fund higher education in the state of Oregon and what are their priorities? And do they align with the things you're saying with the higher ed court and commission and their priorities and the governor's priorities with actually how you're funding things? And that's getting traction, that's what we're hearing, oh, yeah, that's a good discussion to have, whether it's now or in the future. This ties into, again, like talk more, but I don't want to eat up all of the ends time, ties into larger discussions around how do we fund um higher education, post-secondary education in the next biennium? And there's um discussions around that, there's a bill actually out there that would put together um basically a, a, a worker to make that discussion happen, where we would talk about um what kind of revenue sources would be or could be dedicated to higher education, and I should say post-secondary education because it would include uh community colleges as well.
Yes, trustee Cavanaugh.
Yes, um, the 7.5% increase, uh projected increase in enrollment. On the basis of what data was that determined?
And it was based on an original projection that we received from Holly Chason, the EVP for Enrollment Management in October. And which showed us around 14% up um, based on all of the programs that were mentioned earlier that are being brought in, where the pro forma is, all the enrollment data that came along with those, um, and that was then reduced um to something a little bit more real. Um, but it still has a lot built in of, based on the graduate programs and where they're at. For example, the, the Masters of Counseling um is projected to come in with 25 in the fall. That will be our best um program that we have stood up as far as enrollment goes. Um, I think they, uh, counting, Masters of Accounting was looking at six to 10. There's some rebounds in the Masters of um Teaching. And the plus we're seeing growth in our, on campus, and our overall applications are up over 1,000 from the prior year at this time. So if we can make those applications into matriculated students, um, we are well, well beyond the seven and a half percent. You will see a revision um over the summer. Um, institutional research will take some, a deeper dive into enrollment. Um, now that they've gotten their feet on the ground to be able to do that. So you'll see throughout the summer, you'll see different points as we make, make progress on the enrollment side.
Any other questions or comments? Well, as you all know, this is probably the most important thing that we as a board do is make sure the institution stays financially secure. So uh, keep that in mind as we move forward on a motion to accept this preliminary operating budget.
I saw a move that we uh accept this. Thank you.
I'll second that. Trustee Stevens, move that we accept this preliminary budget for 2324. And trustee Mabbett seconded the motion. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, okay, the preliminary budget has been passed. Thank you, Leanne, for, oh my, that's so much work and we appreciate it so much.
We just have one more, one more motion, we need the um non-ENG budget as well, that's right.
We'll do that one next.
Sorry, uh, just a high-level overview of the preliminary non-ENG, so ZARX, ZORI, the Housing Dining, you've heard lots of details of those. Um, Finance and Administration Committee has already heard about them as well. We'll be back in the fall with a much more refined look at, at all of these as well. I just need something to be able to go forward.
Do we need a motion for this? Do I hear a motion for the non-ENG preliminary budget draft?
I move to approve the budget, the preliminary budget as presented.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Trustee Cavanaugh moved to accept the non-ENG preliminary budget draft, and it was seconded by trustee Mendoza. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you, oh, and thank you, Tim, for the good news. That was good. Uh, we will take a 10-minute break, remember we're going to, oh, yes, trustee Stevens, did you have something? Okay, um, we'll, remember, we'll run down and do a quick photo with all trustees present, please.
Just summarizes our last four university council meetings with some of our agenda topics. And along with the subcommittee reports that report up to us. So I'll be open for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you just highlight maybe one or two of those that you think?
Sure. One, we discussed earlier regarding the strategic plan. The other was the great college to work for survey results for 2022, which will be engaging with the cabinet on the 23rd. So looking forward to that conversation.
Thank you, and I think you do a marvelous job with the university council. Thank you for all you do.
Chair, I'd also like to compliment Jeff for coordinating those podcasts that you do. I think those are really informative.
I'll, I'll pass that along. That's not me, but I'll.
Oh, sorry.
So I won't take credit, but thank you, though.
Okay.
You're the conduit for it there. All right. Ashley, would you like to share what the Senate faculty is doing?
I will, thank you. So you have my report as well that summarizes our activities of our subcommittees and just that I would generally comment on shared governance this year. I think it was a very great year for cooperation together, and I credit Jeff a lot with that because he's great at getting us set up and keeping lines of communication open. And I just think that's really important for shared governance amongst the university and committees. It's just to make sure that we communicate with one another and are open and honest with, with each other as much as we can be. We have tough, tough topics come along, especially like in faculty senate, you know, the common course numbering. It's, it's hard to be told by the state to do something and that's, and then turn around and do it. But I feel like that with interinstitutional faculty senate, the voices that we have on there with Christopher Walsh and David Dallas, they're doing a great job in representing EOU and just making sure that we get our voices heard at the state level, so.
Thank you, Ashley. You also do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Martin. I appreciate it.
And now our student body president.
Yes.
A question, if we may, about this.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. I just hope, was wondering if you could detail a little more. It refers, changes to faculty retention, tenure, promotion handbook were proposed and approved. Could you just give me a quick sense for these small changes or substantial?
They were just small changes. And one of them was the going from instructor one to two, I believe. Shortening that time period. So that, and, but that wouldn't take place until our next collective bargaining agreement. So that would, that was the most major change. The rest of it was mostly housekeeping.
I have a question too. Thank you again. I, I read here a work in curricular revision. A new program revision. We mentioned earlier when we were thinking about budget, are those new programs that being approved that introduced fall in here?
They would, if they were.
Well, eventually, right?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay, okay, cool. And one more thing, one note before the next one here. I was at the table with the students today and I asked about, what does a board do? And so I, I said, you know, we need to, I need to explain the concept of shared governance. I wish I had this three. This is a document with me to read some examples of that. It would have been very helpful. So thank you again for all you do, all three of you, the faculty and, and the governance and, and the student. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
ASEU President Civalios.
Thank you. So this report is summarizing what we've done in the last six weeks. The highlights are we are finalizing the annual car smashing event. A local junkyard donated two SUVs. We are purchasing bandanas for students to get for free. And we will have plate smashing as well. It's open for the whole community to come and de-stress right before finals, de-stress from work, destroy some stuff because nothing brings people together like destroying. We are also in partnership with ESE, the Eastern Student Entertainment. And we are going to be hosting a volleyball tournament on May thirty-first. That is on Wednesday. Gonna have some fun, some snacks. We are thinking about having some promotional items, not too sure on that just yet, but gonna have some fun there. And then the final thing I would like to touch on is that the only position we have open for next year for student government is the office assistant. And we have three people highly interested in that position right now. We have our new interim president and he is wrapping up the interim senate for this year. That last meeting is going to be on May twenty-seventh, and then we will get started on assigning committees to all of the new senators. Any questions?
Thank you, Caitlin. Oh, yes. I was just gonna say, Caitlin, just, it's really been a delight to get to know you and thank you for all your work this year on behalf of the students and best of luck to you as you continue forward.
Thank you.
I agree. I think we've had three really outstanding representatives from the university campus and I, I've enjoyed working with all of three of you. And Caitlin, to have all of those offices filled at this point, isn't that quite an improvement from what we've had in the past?
Yes, last year we did have all of the directors, but then some had resigned after getting the position. So we started off the year a little rocky. So to only have, we need one office assistant. All of the directors are filled and then we have one open justice position. We have two justices. And then we have one open senator position because one of the senators actually got hired on as a director. So we're basically starting off with almost a completely full senate for next year. And I do believe that Calvin will open up the last senate position and last justice position at the start of the term.
That's really good news. Good job. Thank you. Thank you to everyone. George, did you have something?
You sure?
I'm sorry. Sorry. Our next presentation will be on the presidential onboarding plan and it will be presented by General Counsel Burford. Chris, please proceed.
I'm gonna ask Tim Seidel and Kimberly Newman, who also join us. Join me here. I'll go ahead and share the document. There we go. All right. For those of you on the governance committee and those who other trustees who attended the governance committee meeting in April. You saw an earlier version of this document that, at that time, it was purely theoretical in that we had no idea who the new, the incoming president would be. And so there was some more estimation about some things. This document is still a generalized document. It doesn't go into a great deal of specific detail about Dr. Ryan's coming on, but that's actually why Tim and Kimberly are joining me. I thought I would go over this, this plan and then to the degree that there's, you know, additional details, these guys are working very closely with Dr. Ryan on, on phase one, which is the one she's in. So as you know, from the cover sheet, I relied on a variety of sources for material for this and including a couple of documents from AGB. And actually, a sort of external engagement plan that Tim Seidel had done in 2015, the last time we were bringing on a new president. So all that are contributors to this. Essentially, it's chronological with five phases of the new president coming on, the first one being the one that started on May ninth, when we announced that when the board selected our incoming president, our president select, and we had our first public engagement around that. Key things to keep in, and as period goes until July one, which will be her actual first day as an employee. That's a really important thing to remember here in phase one. She's here on her own time. And as much clamoring as there is, and I'm, I'm as subject to it as is everyone else for pieces of her time as soon as possible, she is actually an employee of the university yet. And all of this is a bit of an imposition, although I think she's happy to accommodate to some degree. So that's the first thing to keep in mind. And we still have our existing interim co-presidents who are hard at work and greatly appreciated. So those are kind of defining characteristics of this period. As I mentioned, there's just a host of things that a president select is trying to cover in a situation like this, wrapping up their current job, making household decisions, house hunting, learning about the new job, making the occasional trip to the new place. So it's a very busy time. The good, one good point here is originally this was projected for a basically six-week period, but because the board was able to make its appointment on May ninth, we actually got basically an extra week and a half for this time period. So all these phases are organized the same way. There's a context discussion. There's a highlighting of key dates during the period and then key activities that take place. And I won't, I won't go through those all individually. You've got them there in front of you. The, but that is the phase we're in right now. Phase two is the period from July one to the start of the academic year. And that's really a key time when the president select is now president and there are a number of, it's, it's kind of the ideal time for learning the lay of the land and settling into the job, learning about the key relationships during a period before the, you know, the academic year really gets going. I note several things in the context section here. Of course, uh you've already heard about, I believe, about the changes coming to Inlow Hall. So uh the incoming president and all everyone else who works in Inlow Hall will actually be other places uh by July first. And will be for uh I uh I got an updated estimate about this. Probably actually uh into early September of the following year before we're back in this building. So that's all that's that applies to everybody, but it's a factor in this particular instance. Uh, this is also a key opportunity for an incoming president to get some supplemental training. Uh, our last uh new president in twenty fifteen, uh Tom Insco, uh attended the uh Harvard um new president seminar for new presidents and um uh Dr. Ryan's also expressed interest in that. And so we're making arrangements for her to be able to do that. That would actually be her second week on the job. So that week she wouldn't actually be here. But that's the kind of thing that goes on during this period. Uh, and of course, we'll have our board retreat in August and uh also the O C O P retreat a little later in August. And meanwhile, uh it's, you know, one can reasonably be expect the president might be in the midst of things like house search if one has and and those kinds of also personal details associated with moving across the country in three time zones to a new job and a new context. Uh, the third phase is fall term uh and the weeks immediately after it. And that's really getting into uh the swing of the usually how, you know, what what the day to day work is. And uh as you can see, the list of dates and activities gets longer. Uh, fourth phase is the long rush from January two to June fifteenth, uh which is pretty much uninterrupted work. But very much just sort of the day to day work of the position just being done for the first time in this place in this context. And then the final phase, uh phase five is the first sort of regular summer where uh we're doing all the things we typically do in summers. Uh, including getting some vacation time. Uh, but also uh the uh board's annual evaluation, the president's first um performance evaluation uh and prepping uh for an August retreat. Uh, so that's pretty much it. I it uh the the goal of the document is to help everyone just sort of see down the road during a period, a a change in chief executive is always disruptive. Uh, and there's always a fair number of uncertainties. And really the goal of the document was to let everybody who's invested in this change have a pretty decent idea of where some of the bumps are, what the different phases are and what to expect. So uh I don't know if you have any questions about that or not. As I say, for some of you, this is uh material you've seen before. Um, but uh now we're a little farther down the road.
Are there any questions or comments from trustees?
Uh, a comment again. It's a beautiful document. I think that every job should have a document like that with a first year planned and phase one, phase two, phase three. What you should or should not. I really applaud that. I I I talked to some people and said, see this? This is what we need to do. The new people we bring in. So thank you. That's great. You're welcome.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Chris, Kimberly and Tim.
Oh, I have a question. Sorry. Will other external engagements be added to this schedule, like ones with the community?
Absolutely. Um, we're already quite a list already of things that are going on. We just didn't embed them all into this document, but yes, um everything from uh getting Dr. Ryan to Salem, um which is kind of some crunch time trying to figure out how we could do that. I have a list of about twenty appointments we could set for in a space of maybe a day or two. From there to uh all the visiting all of our regional centers um and getting out to our community college partners um as well as people in the community. So the list is already growing extensive, but yes, we'll be engaging with all of that. That's really that time um from July first until the start of the academic year, we have the most flexibility to try to do a lot of that. And then after that, that point, it's just uh based on availability of who we need to get to.
Perfect. We'll be excited to see her at the Pendleton Roundup September.
That's on the list. Oh, now I know where you're going. Yes, that is on the list.
A- a- as president's executive assistant, Kimberly is already working very closely with Dr. Ryan on things like scheduling her events for this week, uh has a day by day, hour by hour agenda that you've been you've been managing. Uh, so getting rolling with it all.
Great, thank you. All right. Great. Thank you so much. We are now going to hear a report on the Moonshot for Equity update, um which will be presented by Vice President of Student Affairs, Lacey Carpillow, and our Project Director Julie Kenery. Please proceed.
So as um Julie gets the presentation up, um I just want to share um with this being my last board meeting, um I really think it's important to share with all of you that a moonshot is in phenomenal hands in Julie's hands. And since the moment she took on the position in November, right, December, December, when she started in December, she just started going in a sprint, um getting things together, moving things forward. And um today is gonna be sharing a lot about a little bit where we've been and where we're headed. Um, and I'm really excited for her to share just the progress that's been made um since she's took over as the lead for this program. And so I just want everyone to know uh Moonshots and Phenomenal Hands. We're so excited to continue Moonshot and really start to see the fruition of some of these great initiatives and programs that are being put into place. And so with that, um, are you ready? Excellent. Uh, and so I'm gonna hand it over um to Julie and um I'll be here to answer any other additional questions, but um please.
Uh, thank you, Lacey. I am going to miss Lacey a lot. But uh I also feel like she has really set all of this up in in such a great way. I feel really um good about moving forward. So um, thank you all for um being here today and uh allowing me to give you an update about Moonshot for Equity. Um, my name is Julie Kenery and as Lacey said, I was hired in December as the Strategic Initiatives Project Director to implement Moonshot for Equity over the next five years. Uh, so I want to begin here with our objectives. So our objective through Moonshot for Equity is to eliminate equity gaps and increase access to higher education across um the eastern Oregon region. And we are working with two partners, Blue Mountain Community College and Treasure Valley Community College. Uh, they each are implementing the fifteen best practices on their campuses. And we're all working together to coordinate our efforts regionally, particularly in relation to transfer pathways. Uh, so um this is our working definition of equity. I think sometimes, you know, what do we mean when we say equity? Um, identifying and eliminating systemic barriers to increase opportunities and access for those who have been historically and are currently marginalized. And the key aspects of this are eliminating systemic barriers and that we'll be measuring our impact um by looking at how our marginalized student populations are doing. And when we think about those historically marginalized and underserved communities, they include these that are here on the sidebar. Um, so some of these are identities that people have, like their race or their gender. Um, other things are statuses that they've experienced during their life, like I'm the first person in my family to attend college and graduate with a four-year degree. Um, this work that we're doing, um we are focusing, we're using an equity lens to look at student success. The um students who were measuring that success are successful by is is the marginalized populations. If are if they're successful, then we're being successful. Um, and you know what we're changing are how we do things. Um, what are our systems? Um, how can we change our policies, practices, procedures so that it is meeting student needs? And by doing this, we're really changing those systems for everyone who comes to E O U. So all students are gonna take advantage of those changes. So at E O U, you know, in particular, w- we're um also interested in our rural students and our transfer students and our online student population. So we'll be looking at all of these different populations as we do this work. So in uh twenty twenty-two, that's when we launched this, the board approved the contract with E A B uh almost a year ago now and we signed an M O U um to work with E A B to implement Moonshot for Equity over the next five years. Um. After that, Lacey went on a tour of campus. She's uh been telling everybody in our campus community about Moonshot, which is a really important piece of this because everybody gets involved in Moonshot for Equity. So I'm having all of our faculty staff, um students being aware of this is really important. Um, in September, the hack approved funding for our first year of this work. And um then in November, we have been working with the A B. E A B did an executive leadership institute. Um, we also had a team of our staff here at E O U who attended the E A B conference. Those were people who'd been um part of getting Navigate going. Um, and then I was hired in December. And so since January and for this year in twenty twenty-three, um, you know, we're continuing to um stay on top of our funding, connecting with the hack. Um, we selected the best practices that we're going to implement first. And I'll go into some more detail about that here in a minute. Um, E A B has continued to be a great support to us, um providing executive updates and working with our staff, providing leadership institutes. Um, and so at this stage, what is going on is I've selected a leadership team, people on our campus who I'll be working with to implement these first four best practices. We're getting ready to launch those teams um here in about a week. And um and I also included on this timeline that we did an annual campus climate survey um in April. So looking into the future, we're here in phase one. Um, or this coming year will be when we implement our our first phase of best practices. So the four that are listed there, proactive advising, transfer pathways, hold reform and retention grants. That's what we're focusing our efforts on this year uh or for the coming year. Um, we also, I've put these two items down here, kind of spanning across all of the five years because campus climate and creating a student coordinated care network are really ongoing pieces that won't necessarily show up like a uh discreet team like these work first four that you see there. Um, but we'll be working on them throughout the time period. Um, so as we complete those first phase best practices, we'll um choose more different best practices that we want to to do next. Um, each of these best practices is we're setting up ongoing evaluation as we do each of them. So we'll be continuing to look and see the effect and impact of the work that we're doing over time. And we are scheduled to complete um implementation in twenty twenty-seven. But again, with ongoing evaluation, I think this work, you know, in certain way, you know, isn't going to be finished, but we will be finished put making all of these changes or this first, you know, set of changes to our systems. Um, I wanted to just kind of bring us back to what is Moonshot for Equity. This is the framework essentially is these fifteen best practice areas. And I really, I love that E O U has selected to use something like this because I I think, you know, this work can feel overwhelming and complicated when you think about student success, you know, what makes student um success happen. And I like that we can kind of return to this framework here and, you know, in a relatively um simplify the the whole concept, um because these are best practices that have been identified to help remove barriers to access. And so we're um, we can, you know, keep our focus here as we kind of get out in the weeds with this work. Uh, so the the highlighted ones here, I don't know if you um notice the similarity in the names. These are the the best practices that we're doing first. Um, and then uh the bolded ones are are those ones that have teams made. So um I want to just give you a little more detail about how we're doing this work because I think how is really important. Um, and so these are those four teams that I've mentioned are those four best practice areas that I've mentioned. The strategy that I'm using is to form a core leadership team that will oversee the work of four subcommittees. I'm trying to find ways that um we can keep all of the people who need to be part of the conversation there and present and also you know, be efficient with people's time and not have everyone have to be on four different subcommittees. Um, so those four subcommittees will each one take on one of the best practice areas. Um, so the, for these particular practice areas, the departments that are listed there are all involved in probably more than one of of each of these subcommittees. So they form the leadership team. Um, in addition, we have two faculty members who are also on the leadership team and there is a faculty member on each of these subcommittees as well. So the the flow of work, uh what happens on these subcommittees, there's basically four phases. Um, you know, they begin by doing some research, understanding what our current systems are. Um, looking at data to see what are the equity gaps that we're experiencing. And then uh developing recommendations, those recommendations will come back to the the leadership team. And um then they'll be implementing recommendations and evaluating, you know, setting up systems for evaluation. That is anticipated to take about a year for most of these, but that's gonna be variable. Some of these are a little more complicated and will maybe take longer than a year. Some of them are, a lot of the work is done because we've been working on it through other grants and so, you know, that might just zoom through really quickly. Um, I want to come back just for a moment to the campus climate survey because I think this is a great example of how all of this work is interconnected on our campus. So, you know, we had um the campus climate survey open for all of our students and employees for the month of April. And through um my role, I was able to help support this for the Title III grant because this is actually a funding requirement of our Title III grant. And um so this information that we're gaining from conducting a campus climate survey is useful to Moonshot. It's useful to Title III. It's useful to all of our D E I V work that's happening on campus right now. Um, so our essentially Moontop for Equity is a tool for us to um look at student success and make changes so that our students are more successful. Um, and what we're really doing is reframing, looking through an equity lens, looking at all of our systems, looking through an equity lens. It's um these uh grants listed. It's these grants listed on the sidebar, those are other ways in which we are addressing student success on our campus right now. And that is part of what I am able to offer to all of this is that through my position, which was wisely named Strategic Initiatives Project Director, I can be thinking, you know, across our campus, across the institution and facilitating those groups coming together. And so, you know, what we're looking for is sort of the things that are working. We have lots of things where EOU excels and that we want to scale those up. Sometimes they're sort of hidden gems. We don't want them to be hidden. So we want to, you know, elevate all of that and make connections. And these little people here are just a visual for all of us, you know, finding those those things and bringing everybody together so that we have a whole concert of activity happening. So Moonshot for Equity comes with some really important resources. One of those is Navigate. That's the online platform for student communications. And it also is a way for us to understand effectiveness of our student communications and how, and develop strategies or evaluations from that. We also have the regional ecosystem, so we're working with other institutions who are also doing this work. And I want to also just bring up the framework, as I mentioned, which I think is really important. And the consulting, EAB has been wonderful to work with. I feel like we have a great resource. We don't have to have all the information or expertise on our campus. We have it through them and they've been really effective at supporting me in this work. So what is our moonshot? You know, we all have heard of the moonshot from the 1960s, getting men on the moon and back to earth again. So, you know, this social challenge is just as steep as the scientific challenge of putting people on the moon. And what it means is what closing our equity gaps means is that every student enrolled at EOU would be equally likely to persist and graduate. So there wouldn't be, regardless of any experiences or identities that you carry with yourself here, you would come here and be successful. So just going back to our overall timeline, we're at the green line there. We've gone through almost a year, our first year of this work. And we're getting ready to really dig into the actual, the actions, you know, what will make these changes. And so I'm excited about this next year, learning and exploring with all of that. And then we'll just iterate, you know, do that again with the other practices and continue until we're at the point of ongoing evaluation. And at that point, you know, I think having done all of this work, we'll be prepared to respond to the evaluations that are in place, you know, as we see whether if there's an area that we're not, that some students are not being successful, then, you know, we have all the tools to respond to that and make changes. So this, again, just viewing this as student success through an equity lens. That's what Moonshot for Equity is doing. And, you know, thinking about higher education in general, our current systems are designed for some people, but not all people. And to use a physical metaphor, if you think about stairs coming into a building, most people can use stairs and it's not a problem for them. Some people need a ramp. As we're designing new systems, it's just as easy to build ramps as it is to build stairs. And so really thinking about universal design in that way, what are the systems that we can build new? Sometimes we're going to be retrofitting, you know, which is a little bit more work than having designed it for all people to begin with. But once these things are in place, then it will be, will be accessible to everyone. So I just want to end with the role of the Board of Trustees and all of this. Leadership is essential. This work is going to happen at all levels, but having everybody expressing their connection to, you know, why we're doing this work is really important. And I just wanted to bring in one of the nine principles of trusteeship, which is lead by example, champion justice, equity and inclusion. And so I really appreciate all of you being here, listening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Trustee Mabbett.
Thank you. Really wonderful. And Lacey, all the best. So sad. But all the best to you. How, are you the only person doing this work for the two community college partners? Or do you have a counterpart at those? I wasn't, I know you're working closely with them and I think that's a fabulous relationship for a whole bunch of reasons. But explain how that works.
They are still kind of bringing together those resources on their campuses. The, what I understand is that they will both eventually be hiring a project director, but they don't have that person yet. So I am really looking forward to when, when there is that person to connect with. I have points of contact at each of the community colleges, but they haven't got that person who's really dedicated to this, which is really important. I'm not, I can't quite imagine how, you know, you would do all of this without having somebody, or at least, you know, completely shifting their duties and priorities.
Also, I just add from a coordination perspective, the presidents of the two community colleges and EOU have been meeting to discuss and move some of the critical elements of the first year forward, such as everyone using Navigate. So it's not like there aren't any discussions going on. And the last I heard, Blue Mountain had made an offer to someone for their director.
And I'll just add really quickly. So those meetings with the leaders and the presidents is a quarterly meeting that we have scheduled. So it's scheduled quarterly meetings to keep that on the forefront and keep that line of communication at the president level. And then Julie has lots of meetings with the kind of counterparts at our community colleges. So there's regular communication.
Trustee Valerio.
Thank you, Julie. This morning, we heard the keynote speaker, CJ Coffey, bragging about EOU three times. Three times he said, and thank you EOU, because you welcomed me as a non-traditional student. And I went away and I came back and I'm here today. And by the way, my kids are, my kids are older than many of you here. But EOU embraced me and this is why I'm standing here today. A non-traditional student that found that in EOU. I think at Moonshot for Equity is the word used with regional ecosystem, right? Super cool, right? A universal design with a student-centered idea. In this philosophy of the student-centered, who are the other partners? I mean, Blue Mountain, TBCC, EOU. But there are others. I give an example. Baker Technical Institute is a non-traditional career-oriented higher education institute that has done very career-oriented, non-traditional, very impactful things. And is reaching non-traditional students, like example, they were selected for by the state of California to retrain their Department of Transportation, state of Idaho Department of Transportation retraining. So they're reaching out in the places where our normal fingers, our normal things, most likely are not going to be reached. So I guess at one thought, what I heard CJ today say, thank you EOU. I keep on going back to the future enrollment and say, if we have to explore those 2,500 or those 5,000 goals on the ascent 2029, we're going to have to really think about a regional ecosystem, student-centered. So do we envision others? I mean, TBCC may not be happy and ready or whatever. Blue Mountain may be hiring a new director, but who else can be a partner in this line of thinking? Student-centered, regional and with a universal design.
Well, I love that you brought that up. I think that what you're describing is really important. And there are, you know, as we move forward into other phases of this work, community partnerships is a piece that will address directly. And I think that is the moment when we'll be at a point where we've done enough work on our campus and we're ready to start looking beyond the three partners that are part of Moonshot for Equity and be really engaging and connecting with our community to look at some of of those other opportunities.
Thank you.
Trustee Cronin.
Thank you, Julie and Lacey. Again, I'll just reiterate, we're so happy to have had you and best of luck. You've done amazing things here. Julie, so it's early. Clearly, there's a long-term plan, which I love to see. If I, and I'm pretty new here to the trustee position. If I, if I were walking around campus, would I see something being done differently now? Right now in May because of the moonshot than was being done in September?
Probably not this year. I hope in the future that we see those changes because to me, just kind of the level of activity on our campus is important as far as opportunities for belongingness and for people to feel connected to our community. But like right now, what's happening is very much in the background. You know, we're getting ready to have these teams start meeting and they'll be looking at transfer pathways and advising and, you know, really getting into the nuts and bolts of some of those background things that happen that are really important for students, but not necessarily visible. So, so I hope so in the future.
So I would like to add to that. So I think Julie really, really spoke to, there's so much happening behind the scenes. And so if you step back beyond the, you know, think of the stage behind the curtain, you would feel it and you would see it. So that increased kind of communication, that increased removing some silos, that synergy of people working together. When you think about us bringing together all the grants, right? We spoke often about the grants and how they all kind of overlap and that's part of that synergy. So maybe you don't see it upfront, but you see behind the scenes of how we've had that synergy with those grants to make sure that we're not adding new initiatives, but we're using those grants to add to those significant initiatives to help move them forward and create capacity. And we have things, we just recently have Beanie and with DIB, I mean, Beanie with DIB and Julie with Moonshot coming together and we were able to do, take an online diversity conference that was happening. And what we did is we actually had classrooms. So you would have felt like you were doing a remote conference and Julie and Beanie and Colleen, some other key people on our campus, they hosted a room where you could come and watch that virtual, that virtual training or workshop and then talk as a group. And so some of that kind of coming together, we necessarily see, but you could feel it. And I think that that's something that's really exciting is the energy about this work is really exciting. Bringing everyone back into the room and having those great conversations. I think that what you see behind the scenes hopefully will start to spill over to the state so it becomes more visible.
Just as a recap, though, leadership campus climate next year. Correct. Access and enrollment next year, student support and belongingness next year. Academic policies and practices, that's the focus for next year throughout the course of the school year. Were those the three or four that you were focused on?
Yes, so these four proactive advising, transfer pathways, retention grants and hold reform. Those are the four main groups that we are focused on. We also are, you know, in those beginning stages and in those conversations of looking at something which is very complex, like campus climate. You know, campus climate is for our employees and it's also for our students. So those pieces will be thinking through. And when I say we, you know, there's, this is me with our leadership team and with others on campus to think through, like, how do we impact our campus climate? How do we make those kind of changes? So campus climate and student coordinated care, are those a little bit more nebulous things that we'll be looking at over time?
Trustee Cavanada.
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Lacey for her leadership and wish her the best in her next adventure. I also was reflecting on some of the earlier conversations we had with Ben Cannon from Hack and particularly in regards to course numbering, which would facilitate the transferring. So I just wonder to which extent you are aware of that work or is that aligning with the Moonshot for Equity?
Yeah, that's another great example of just the synergy of all these different things all coming together right now. And, you know, by having this framework of Moonshot for Equity, we're able to capitalize really on the things that are happening at the state, like the course changes or the course numbering systems alignment. Because we can take that and say, okay, here's the, here are these pieces that are important, puzzle pieces to this bigger picture. And then, you know, we will build those into the systems that we create here at EOU. So everything that we're doing with Moonshot, you know, we want to be always aware of and thinking about, you know, what's already happening on our campus, what's already happening in our state that we're just carrying forward and building capacity for those things. So yes, that, that will be an important piece that helps support our transfer pathways work.
Trustee Johnson.
I'd like to commend the team for their work here. Trustee Cronin, I had the pleasure of having lunch with a couple of high school students, students who are planning on going to BMCC to start their college career. And I'm convinced these two don't think that EOU is accessible. There are obstacles to make them think they just can't get here. And I'm thrilled that we are thinking about that specifically to see what we can address because this should be an option for them. But I'm intrigued as we've started this process to see how the effort's developing. And I would encourage our current presidents, our incoming president, to think kind of hard about how we're going to develop this effort. I had assumed Moonshot for Equity was going to focus tactically. We've spent years working with BMCC and TBCC on various issues and we have some successes and a lot of frustrations. And so I assumed this is going to be tactical. And yet, when I hear the scope of what we're talking about, this is tremendous in the scope. I'm imagining trying to rationalize IT software platforms and certainly rationalizing curriculum and a broad set of other really tremendous issues that I think have to be dealt with, not at a tactical level, but in a far more strategic fashion. If that's the case, it probably takes different kinds of engagement from our leadership. And that probably takes more money and a different way for us to make decisions about what we think is important so we can rationalize it with those other institutions. I'm not sure what the answer should be. But it is interesting to see how this conversation changed because I thought it was pretty narrow before. And these things we're talking about now are life, campus changing for all three campuses.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting mix of. Yeah, it's it's an interesting mix of things that are part of that framework for Moonshot for Equity. Because some things are very tactical, I guess, if I'm understanding exactly what you mean. But thinking about like retention grants, it's a very specific thing that we can create here. And it's it's fairly simple, you know, relative to some of these other things like transfer pathways, which also requires that tactical look. But it is way more complicated because it's all of our partners. It's the whole system of higher education in Oregon. It's it's so many things. So those things are going to be a little more strategic. A lot of how do we, you know, how do we do this successfully? But that's part of the reason why I am so glad that we have EAB as a partner because, you know, they've worked with other institutions around the country on these things. And our situation isn't going to be the same necessarily as other, the other institutions they've worked with. But I do hope that that they will help to guide some of that as we, you know, run into those barriers that we've run into before. You know, we've been working on transfer pathways for a long time. So it's not a new problem and it's not something that we've never thought about or never tried to to do anything about. So I I guess I look at at my role as very much the dedicated problem solver. So, you know, having somebody who can keep, kind of keep carrying that ball forward is, I think, going to be important for this kind of work.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. I had the same thoughts. And I wanted to ask you, are you, is that going to be part of your role? Because when the Moonshot was presented, that was, of course, one of the things I really picked up on and was cheerleader for was making those pathways between the two university, or community colleges work seamlessly with ours. That made a lot of sense to me. Is that going to be, it sounds like your role is kind of more over here. Is it going, are you going to have the time and the resources to extend yourself across the the spectrum of what 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 many of us felt were was kind of a key piece of this?
I anticipate that, you know, there's an equal portion of the circle here taken up by transfer pathways in my visual. But transfer pathways is big. And I anticipate that it's going to require more problem solving and more more of my time as we go through that work. So, so yes, I am planning to to be the person, you know, that helps facilitate this through whatever. It's almost like a student going through school, like what barriers and challenges come up. You know, we'll be, I'll be trying to work through those.
Thank you. And so are the two community colleges, do they see that as as a, is that positive in their view for us to work on that pathway piece? Are they resisting that or are they jumping on board with that saying, oh, yes, yes, we think we can work with you on that?
Um, I think that they don't necessarily have the same incentive for transferability, you know, that we have. Although it is a service to their students if that is the direction that they want to go. And, you know, I've already seen some positive impact as far as, you know, there are opportunities that come up through EOU, such as the ASIO scholarship. And those are things that we can pass through to our community college partners. And so as we put in our application for a new round of ASIO work here, we brought our community college partners into that so that there is a more direct way for them to provide funding for their students during the time that they're at community college so that they can transfer to EOU to finish their four-year degree. So I think there are going to be tangible opportunities like that that are, you know, clearly beneficial to to them, having students come through their AA programs. And I just feel that more and more of those, as we, you know, enter into these conversations that are really connected, we'll see more and more of those kind of opportunities to support one another.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Julie and and Lacey so much for the work that you do on this. It's doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you. Are there other comments or questions for these presenters? Thank you. Okay, I think our final presentation today will be some sharing of the trustees and Secretary Burford that went to the annual AGB conference in San Diego. So it probably won't take very long, but maybe it will. I I know I started going through my notes and I was writing things down. All of a sudden, I thought, I still have twenty pages of notes. This isn't going to work. They'll be bored. So anyway, Cedric, why don't you start us off? You had a perplexed look on your face, like I didn't really want to go first.
No, I can go first. Yeah, I just had some some notes. First off, really enjoyed the conference. I thought it was really eye-opening to be able to see that we're not alone in a lot of our challenges that we have, a lot of the other universities. Excuse me. A lot of the other universities that were present there have similar challenges, whether they were large, small, private, public, four-year, or as people throughout the conference jokingly kept saying, whether they admitted it or not, were for profit. Regardless of what university, they were lots of similar challenges. A couple of things really stood out to me that we were there. There was a lot of different presentations, a lot of really good speakers. One of the questions that came up in several different presentations was what are we good at as a university? A lot of times it seems we're focusing on questioning what can we do better or where are we failing? And that's one thing that stuck out with me is sticking with what are we good at? What is something we can actually focus on? What are our strengths that we can build off of as an institution? Where are we, what are our good programs? Where are we actually doing a good job? And using that as the foundation of moving forward. Another one that came up was partnerships. Man, excuse me. Partnerships within the university. So we just had a great presentation with Moonshot for Equity, which is a really good partnership program. But with a small university like ours, how do we maintain identity as a university moving forward within those partnerships? I do think that those partnerships are very important. Surely we'll be discussing other partnerships moving forward, but that's one thought. That was my thought that was coming up is a lot of different presentations talked about partnerships. But one of the speakers even admitted that, you know, some of these partnerships might need to come in, you know, come in essentially over some of the university's own personal ambitions, which didn't sit right with me fully because I understood what he was trying to say. But at the same time, being able to balance identity with partnerships. I do agree that partnerships are important. I really like our Moonshot for Equity program. However, within that program and as we add other programs, how do we maintain our identity as Eastern Oregon University? Something that I'll be thinking of moving forward and bringing up for discussion. Another important point that came up, and I've got a lot, I'll just touch on the ones that stuck out to me in particular. One of the presentations, they did a research survey that ninety-six percent of faculty and college personnel that were interviewed believe that their students are workforce-ready. Less than twenty percent of the workforce surveyed agreed with that statement. Which to me was kind of a shocking statistic. Or it makes me curious, are we as universities, not just EOU, but universities in general, are we actually preparing our students for the workforce? If less than twenty percent of the workforce says yes, we have a problem because we are focused on our students, which is important. But our second biggest shareholder really is the workforce and the the people that we're sending our students to. It's one thing to say, yeah, we can graduate students, but are they actually ready to be successful post-college? And and that's one that really stuck with me throughout the conference and one that I had the opportunity to discuss with a couple other leaders that happened to be there. And and it is important to think about, are we actually serving our community with our programs, with the students? And I think this board's done an effort to do that, the programs that we add. There's, I think, every program that we've added, we've had a deep discussion about there's a demand for this in this community, that this community needs this. So I think that we as a board have done a pretty good job about that. But just putting in your minds, are we, are we making sure that we're meeting the needs of our local area, of our region? If we want to be, if we want to maintain an identity as a regional institution, are we actually meeting the the needs of those groups? And then the last point I had, one big one that came up was strategy. So one of, it actually came up in a couple of presentations, but there are a couple of presentations that implied that the five-year plan is dead, which I thought was an interesting discussion topic, that the five-year plan is dead, that the insinuation being that the climate is changing so rapidly that to make a long-term strategic plan is a mistake for some universities. And and they cited some specifics, I could go through my slides and find them, but they cited some specific examples where universities have long-term plans and they were able to shorten those plans and make them into more concise steps with an end goal in mind. I guess the evaluation there would be, as it pertains to Eastern Oregon University, and why I said we're already discussing it is the Ascent 2029 is a long-term plan. And having conversations within that, you know, is it, how do we want to evaluate that moving forward? I like it. I think it's a really powerful plan. I think it's something good to build, to continue building towards. But this is a new board. There's a lot of new people incoming. We have a new president incoming. I think it's a really important time to be able to have that deep conversation about that strategy that was set. Where we're at, it's clear that we're not happy with some of our measurements. And maybe it is a good time to really strongly evaluate it. Is this a course we want to stay or do we want to move? And like I said, that was several different presentations within the conference that came up discussing that fact of maybe it's time sometimes to change, should have changed the strategy or sometimes it's time to stay coarse. But there was a lot of agreement that a little bit too long-term of one can be a drawback for some universities if they get stuck in trying to just push to that without actually considering the change that's happening around them. I think I'll stop there because those were the main ones that I had. But overall, I had a very good experience and it was very, as I mentioned, in a way, it was very relieving to talk to other groups and realize that a lot of us have the same challenges. I also want to commend this board and everyone that serves on this board because talking to some of the other boards, there's some, there's some people struggling out there. Some of some of the other boards, I talked to some other, I sat with the student trustee group at a roundtable breakout and 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 one of the students was mentioning how all the decisions are known beforehand, that they go in knowing the vote, that there's no discussion, that they don't even know really what's on there until the agenda comes up, that they don't get any information prior to the meeting about vote items. They just know they're basically advised to say yes or no, and they don't themselves really know about the process. And I was like, okay, well, that's, we do it a little bit differently. But but yeah, I just want to commend this board, all jokes aside. I do want to commend this board for the hard work that I know all of you do for this university. Was very eye-opening to see that, you know, we're not alone in these struggles. Yes, we're competing with a lot of universities, but how do we also turn that competition into strong partnerships? But maintaining our identity as a rural university, how does that pertain to our strategy? I don't know. Those will be the future discussions. But I know that this board is a lot stronger than some that I came across there. So I have no doubt that we'll be just fine moving forward, but those are my big takeaways.
Thank you, Cedric. You're always so articulate with your observations. Thank you. Chris.
Well, thank you, Chair Martin. Uh, this is the, you know, we had really three years with no in-person conferences. And I must say, it was, I attended, I did attend with my, with you and Cedric, the National Conference on Trusteeship, but it was preceded by the Conference for Board Professionals. And so I tend, I was able to attend both. And I got to say, it was immensely refreshing to be, similarly what Cedric was saying, with people who who do what I do and and leaders in this field of supporting governing boards for elite institutions, both private and public. Often, when it gets right down to it, I'm the only person here who does this. And sometimes people are like, okay, thank you for your opinion. But it is actually, obviously, I came to this position as as an attorney and very much identifying as such. I can remember when I read the position description and I saw this stuff about being a board, supporting the board. I thought, well, you know, I don't know how to make photocopies. I did not appreciate that being a board secretary is its own profession. And it's it's really excellent to be with people who understand that and are really in the position of espousing and promoting professional standards. So that that Conference for Board Professionals was excellent. Both these conferences had the largest attendance they'd ever had. I think people were eager to actually get back in person again. So briefly, with Conference of Board Professionals, that was a major takeaway. Just the, from the opening plenary forward, hearing from, you know, being being reminded of the significance and importance of the of the role. Another thing that was available to attendees was you could schedule an hour with an AGB expert. And I actually availed myself of that. There was a particular question about, well, broadly speaking, about our board's governance that was vexing me at the time. And I think we will have more conversations about it in the future. I don't want to name the particular problem at the moment. But, you know, I got down to, got to sit down with a person who wrote her PhD on this topic and has basically worked in that area for twenty-seven years and is a leading advisor to AGB. And I got really excellent advice. And frankly, the most valuable advice I got was, I basically had it right to start with. But I wouldn't know that if I hadn't had that conversation. So, so that's, that's a, that's a sense of the value of the Conference for Board Professionals. For the, I got to say, going to the Conference on Trusteeship, as as I've had the privilege of doing for several years with trustees, it is, I linked the agendas to the board cover sheet. There's just a lot of, there's a lot of meat there in terms of the content of the sessions. But at least half of the of the value is the informal networking that goes on and some of it's formal. There are several receptions. And in this case, we were able to do as we have done in some prior years and actually get together with trustees from the other, from other Oregon public universities. So that we had a dinner Sunday night with trustees and staff from PSU, OSU, and OIT. And I just think those are, you know, those are valuable opportunities to to learn from folks who basically do what you do in slightly different contexts. to learn from folks who basically do what you do in slightly different contexts. As far as substantive topics, there were two that really stood out for me from the Conference on Trusteeships. They were complimentary presentations that were conducted. I think was Monday morning and then at the same time slot on Tuesday morning. The first one was called Leadership Strategies for Equitable Student Success. So there's a tie-in here to the moonshot presentation you've seen. And the other was called Leadership Principles for Equitable Student Success. The strategies part talked about universities in Kentucky, actually, interesting enough, who are, who basically are attempting to do something similar like what you're doing with Moonshot. A very different way from the way we're doing Moonshot. So their effort has been very much from the board level and the, and frankly, the coordinating commission and the board level down. So it's been the 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 strategy and policy leaders, the trustees themselves saying, this has got to be pushing their institutions to saying, we're going to do this thing. And they've done it in a coordinated way, working with a nonprofit think tank and using using grant funding to attempt to really up their game with equitable student success. So this is just naturally interesting because frankly, we've done all those things differently. Where this is, I think, our effort here has been, well, it was it was not from the board down. It was sort of driven up from from leader, you know, senior leadership among in administration, identifying the opportunity of moving forward. We work with a for-profit entity. We've gotten legislative funding. So it's just an interesting to see the contrast in models. I didn't go, and frankly, I so that was what was notable about that. The one on leadership principles for equitable student success was quite interesting because I think you are all familiar from every staff cover sheet you've ever seen with the 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 ten essential elements, essential responsibilities of the governing board, right? This comes from A G B documentation. We talk about this all the time. In fact, we require presenters who want to come talk to the board to first say how what they're talking about relates to those principles. Why, essentially, why are you using the board's time? And this was basically a presentation that went through each of those, talking about why equitable student success touches on each of those elements and really should be a an absolute priority for boards in their fiduciary role, leading their institutions. Now, there are lots of other reasons and contexts for that. If there's a reason, it's the, it's a topic everyone seems to be talking about, right, at the moment? But I just thought, from frankly, the 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 board professional standpoint, seeing it put through that lens was quite interesting. And it may be a tool I draw on in future conversations with the governance committee or others, depending on how it seems relevant. I've probably gone on too long, so thank you. But I I I just want to emphasize, as I'm sure others will, that you think, okay, I got a life, I got a job, I got responsibilities. These people want me to take the better part of a week to go some to some place to listen to a discussion about boards and trusteeship. The word board is in the term. But actually, these are really great events and I'll certainly encourage. We have essentially the budget for the board can cover up to four people going in any given year and still do all this other stuff we do. So we've built this in and I just encourage trustees to actively consider going. Hand it off to you, Chair Martin.
I'll be really brief, but yeah, they, for eight years, they've asked me if I wanted to go and I turned it down for seven years. And and I went this year and it was worth my time. It really was. It was interesting to hear things that, like Cedric said, really emphasized the point of what a great board we have and what we do. And I I felt very honored to be a part of a board that, to me, was excelling when I listened to other boards. So that was, that was key. One of the main points that they brought up in several of the sessions was how boards, how, what a huge responsibility boards have and that we, universities are dependent on autonomous boards and and dependent on a no connection with government. And I I got the sense that kind of what was going on in Florida and some of the other states was paramount for some of those boards in that they felt like there was being a an undue amount of influence. I'm not saying I always agreed with everything they said, but an undue influence on on the boards and on the institutions and that public institutions were established early on in United States history as being that that place that did not have government intrusion and how important it was to have public universities that were operating from a point of what was good for the students in the universities rather than what the government thought we should be doing. So I thought that was kind of a key thing that I picked up on a lot of of the sessions. I just took two or three little snippets. I I thought I really liked when they said, don't look at challenges as challenges, look at them at opportunities. And I thought that was really key. Another thing was be ahead of the challenge that you see coming. So we need, as a board, we need to be thinking, okay, we're looking down the road. Financially, we may be having some challenges. Let's be ahead of that challenge rather than cleaning up the mess afterwards. And I thought that was really important. They also talked a lot about looking at curriculum and asking questions. You know, is this, is this profitable? Is this good? Are we needing it? So that was a, that was a key point for that. I I thought another thing, they said, have a trustee that deals with the facilities and grounds. And I thought that was kind of a, I, that was maybe a huge university, but I thought that was kind of cool. But if Brad thought he wanted to be the trustee that was that key conduit between the facilities and grounds people with the board. And I thought that was, that was a refreshing point of view. I went to a session on the mental health piece of our universities and how important it is to be on top of students now that it is a big issue. And we see it not only in K-12, but we see it at universities and how important it is to have those resources. And I know Lacy's worked really hard with that and have that 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 piece there for even when students first enroll, you're assessing, you know, their needs for mental health issue. And I really appreciate that. Lots of things, lots of things. I, you, like Cedric and I were talking, you you get a little burned out by the the last day because you can only absorb so much, but it was very worthwhile. So I would encourage other trustees to take that opportunity. And and they said, Chair, when I went to the chair session, they said, make sure you know your board members as colleagues, not just board members. So you're all invited to my house for a barbecue at some point in time, right? Anyway, great, great time worth spent. And my sister went with me and we rode the train from Salem to San Diego, and that was a kick. So there you go. All right, so that is it for today. We do have dinner, Brent Hoke in the community room. We'll have presentations, and I think you've all seen the the schedule for that. So I encourage you all to go and and hear these students and their leaders, I guess you could call them, present to us. So any questions, any comments? How many of you have gone so far to, most of you are new, so? Okay, good, yeah. Yeah, and yours was in where? Orlando? Yours was virtual. It it really is fun to go and have those side conversations with other people. I think you get as much out of those as anything, so. All right, with that, we will adjourn for today and we will start again in the morning at nine o'clock. Oh, at eight fifteen, we have our coffee hour with all of the colleges. So come and have coffee with faculty and staff. Okay, meeting adjourned.